Okay, why don't we call this here meeting to order? And roll call, I believe we have everybody but David at this point.
And Ann.
And Ann. So Matt, why don't we elevate Matt to voting status? And before we go into the, the reading of the minutes, I'd just like to give a heads up to those that may be wanting to to hear about David Lewis, I'm sorry Victor Lewis, 9C at the end of the meeting. They won't, we're going to receive that letter tonight. We're not gonna, we're not gonna act on it in, in, in any way. So just keep that in mind. It's at the very end of this meeting. Okay, so reading and approval of minutes. 3A regular meeting. Anybody have anything?
To make a motion that we accept that we are the regular meetings minutes.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All the favors raising hand? All right. Minutes accepted for June 9th and the special meeting minutes of June 30th. Does anyone have anything on that?
I'll move that we adopt those minutes.
Second.
All favor. Okay, so we've adopted those. Okay. So moving on to old business. First, first item on the agenda is clarification of baseline of operations and aspirations of Club Getaway. I think everyone just recently, because I think we just received it today, got a copy of what I would call the baseline of operations from Club Getaway. It was a four page sheet. Everybody see this? So as we've been, we've been discussing, and I think the way this should move. As far as the, the regulatory approach to this, this is a pre-existing non-conforming use. And I think we've all accepted that. We all know what it is. When we first started out, we asked for a baseline operations and they have submitted it. So that's that's the clarification that I believe that we were looking for all the way along. I've read it. And as I recall, Club Getaway in the days of Victor Fink, that's, that's pretty much the operation that he had. Anybody, hey David? Everyone else have the same impression?
I, I thought the baseline of operations was, was great and, and really pretty thorough. I read the whole thing and, you know, learn some things that they do and but I thought it was really thorough and, and well done.
So this is really recognizing other vested rights that we all know or is a pre-existing use. And so I would submit that, that we should accept this and, and as the clarification and, and move on.
I agree with that. I, I don't think that I think writing a regulation for this is all sorts of problems or potential problems, I should say, not problems. And we have a, we have a pre-existing non-conforming use that's been here for for many, 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 many years. And I think we can accept that. We have a baseline of operations. We understand what they do and what they were, what they plan to do. And I think that, that satisfies me.
And it is confined to one area.
Yeah.
Can I chime in? I don't know if I'm allowed to talk.
Of course.
So first of all, thank you. So all I did was submit the same document that, that was back in the September meeting, September of 2021. It's the same exact document. And, you know, which, which is a baseline and it's what we do. I just, I, what I don't understand is why, you know, if we're working to create a regulation and you have a business in, in town trying to conform with a zoning regulation. And here's my biggest concern. At a special meeting in July of this music concert, whatever disaster that happened here. And at that point, it was labeled a special event. My biggest concern as a business is what is considered a special event? And when what happens if I do, if, if, if I'm hosting an adult weekend and, and, and it's a different commission than it is right now? Is that going to be considered a special event? You know, these are my fears as, as, as a longstanding business and hopefully a future longstanding business in, in, in the community.
For me, David, your, your your baseline of operations here would cover your having a, an adult weekend. And, and what it doesn't say on here is that you're going to have a concert. You know, when I read this and I read everything that you listed.
Okay.
And when I, I didn't see anything on here that I didn't always understand was something that that Club Getaway does or did. And that the concert was, was something different. It is not something that you or Victor had ever done before. As far as I know, and and it was impactful on the community. Impactful on your neighbors and but that's not listed. So if you want to do something like that again, I think that would be a special event. But I think that everything that's on your list here, if we accept this as your baseline of operations, I think that all those things are pretty well covered. I, I don't know what everybody else thinks. This is just what this and what I see.
Yeah, I don't think special events are prohibited. I, I think we just have to know about them.
Right. And I guess my question is, so, so I host a wedding. Would, would, would a wedding be considered a special event? I mean, these are, I, I just want to make sure that, that there's a clarification. So I, you know, and, and again, that was an extreme and, and, and that was something that was different. But you know, it just brought up that question in my mind. Wow. What if, you know, what if all of a sudden something's tagged as a special event? And, and according to the regulations, I believe you could only host one special event a year, but my whole business is special events.
So Adam, I'm, I'm going to push back on what you're saying just a little bit. The language here has some open-ended statements in it, like privates and events include but are not limited to. If we were going to accept a document, it's kind of a definition, then we would have to remove any ambiguous language. There's questions in language about whether or not it can be running as a hotel or an Airbnb. That would be, need to be clarified if this is going to run as a normal, as a hotel or not. You know, the white label partner programs. Sorry. Again, you know, there's an event here and, you know, it talks about brand activations, film, TV productions, and if they're going to do a, you know, they're going to film a TV show. Sorry, they're going to film a TV show of a concert. Like there's just, there's not a lot of clarity in some of this. So I'm not opposed to the idea of taking a self, you know, defined document, but I prefer that it become explicit as if it were a regulation, clearly delineating what normal is. And if it's not normal, then it becomes a special event. And if we want to allow, you know, a certain number of special events, I, I prefer it be stated very clearly in here. And then just one more clarity. I guess my question would be if, if he does want to do something new or different, that means he's recruiting him to go to the Board of Appeals, right? If you wanted to adjust something going forward, once we have a baseline.
Yeah.
Yeah. Why would it, why would it be the Board of Appeals and not to this commission?
Because you're pre-existing non-conforming. And at that point in time, anything that you want to get, that you would like to do, you would have to get a variance.
So I'm not opposed to the idea of going without a regulation, but if we're not going to write a regulation that we need to write, we need this to read as if it were a regulation. So it was clarity for the future board and whatever member is going to be here. And clarity about what some of these very amorphous things are. Very, because it, it could be very, there, there are people in the future, there might be a future owner of Club Getaway and there's going to be a future board members here. They may have a very different interpretation of some of these, some of this language. So I, I would just want to see it a lot more defined if we're going to depend on it.
I don't disagree with you, David. I think that it may be a better way to go to make this a little more ironclad.
Well, we can, well, I think we can certainly edit what, what they've got. But this, this, the, the pre-existing non-conforming way to regulate is far from perfect. Far from perfect. But but what it doesn't do is establish a, a right and defined by some regulations for this to happen in other places, which of course has always been my concern.
But what I'm confused about and what I don't understand is why if, if there's a business in Kent wanting to be your non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming entity in Kent, looking to be a, and, and again, maybe this is, I, I just don't understand. Why is there pushback? What, what, what's the pushback that to, to create a regulation for a business that's already in Kent? Maybe that's his question Dwight and I need to talk about after, but I just don't understand.
Well, I think if it's a regulation, if it applies to you, it applies to all pursuant to that regulation. Right now, this is a confined use.
So anybody, David, that's, that's as property that is large enough can actually do what you're doing in the rural district if there's a regulation. And I think that's the fear that Wes has, that, that this is going to be something that could pop up elsewhere. And so by making you pre-existing non-conforming, then that use can't be done anywhere else within the rural district. And that you would then still be able to operate as pre-existing non-conforming under the baseline that you've submitted of your business activities now. I don't necessarily agree with that. I understand the rationale. I understand the reasoning. I think, I think we're we had looked at the overlay district. We have looked at floating zones. We've, and I think we've never done anything like that. I think there might be a little bit of, of, on my part, there's a little bit of hesitation on instituting something that's like that, that Kent has never seen before.
So I, I want to ask a couple of questions and, and they're based on my, my much, the, the platform or, or the position that I'm coming from is that the, the, the point is of, of the regulations is to, as much as possible, bring pre-existing non-conforming properties, parcels into a more conforming environment into a bit, into, into something that's more conforming rather than less conforming. And, and we're, we're not allowed to increase in non-conformity. So my question is, is it the position of this commission that what David doing there, that Club Getaway is an undesirable use for the town of Kent?
I'm not sure anybody would submit that.
So following up with that, that's, that's, that's what I would suggest too. Following up at that, why, why would the commission take the position that it's, it would be an undesirable use anyplace else except where it is? I mean, it's a desirable use where it is. I think I don't make that, I'll, I'll, I'll make that leap if I may. So what's to say that it's, it's, it's not a desirable use someplace else?
I think it's a matter of planning. I, I, I don't know. I can think of a lot of places where this could happen. And I'm not so sure that would be very desirable.
Mr. Chairman, this is Dwight Miriam. Could I, could I briefly on a couple of the points raised?
Yes, thank you.
As Commissioner Bernbaum has said, that one of the alternatives here is to provide more detail on the extent of the non-conforming uses and create a sort of ersatz, if you will, regulation. And that's a possibility. That's a possible path. I don't think it's the most desirable path for all of the stakeholders. As to the question of whether adopting a regulation designed to facilitate Club Getaway will open the door to other sites. In the memorandum I provided, I noted that you could as a commission, but the advice and counsel of Glenn Chalder and Donna Hayes and others limit, limit the total acreage to this type of use to say 325 acres.
So there's other sites in town like this?
Excuse me?
There, there are other sites like that. This is not totally.
No, no, total acreage in the town to 325 acres, period. So that would preclude, at least with regard to Club Getaway, with anybody else doing more, because that would exhaust the limit, just like you have so many acres of residential, so many acres of commercial, you can have so many acres of, of resort and, and conference center. So you should not be worried. I'm just telling you, you should not be worried about adopting a regulation that causes others to come in because there are several different ways we can control it. My final point is that the struggle here at this point is what happens when David wants to change his operations slightly? And as Donna Hayes suggests, that if it's a non-conforming use, he's got to go to the zoning board of appeals and request a variance for which it's difficult. Ninety percent of the variances are frankly are granted illegally because they can't meet the necessary, the practical difficulty and the necessary hardship. Whereas if you had a regulation, you could keep the control of the changes at Club Getaway in your commission. So that if he wanted to add an additional service or some more residential use or some more banquet use, or I don't know what, it would have to come back to you for your review and approval, rather than go over to the zoning board of appeals and, and, and talk about a variant. So I would just say that number one, if you want to get on the path of refining the scope of operations to have more detail, that's possible. If you want to do a regulation, you should not fear that a regulation will necessarily allow others to come in because I can tell you, I know how to preclude that from happening, absolutely. And number three, as you need to consider, it seems to me, whether you want to give up control over changes that occur here or keep it within the planning and zoning commission as modest amendments are made, rather than cause Club Getaway to have to go over to the ZBA for variance. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
I want to add my support to Matt's comment as well. I feel it's, it's very, it feels very disingenuous to say this is a, a, a good use here and only here. It just doesn't feel like it stands up to what planning and zoning is supposed to be about. It feels like we would, we should be able to use the tools in our toolbox to ensure that this use would be good. If it's going to be good somewhere else, that we can limit it to total acreage or, you know, we have things like traffic controls. Obviously you don't want to have this on a tiny back road in the middle of nowhere and expect to have, you know, 600 cars showing up for something. I would, as I, I would foresee it as a regulation.
David, I think what you say is true about zoning, but not necessarily planning.
Have we heard back from Glenn Chalder? He has my memo. I don't know if we've heard.
What do you, what do you mean Wes? Why?
Well, I think that as we had suggested that we, we make this known in the P O C D as an acceptable use in its current location. I don't know. I've, I've expressed my view as a, as a, as a, as a single commissioner.
I, um, I, I hadn't thought about the fact that he would have to go in front of the ZBA if he wanted to make a change. And I I don't think that that is a a reasonable solution, because in the end ZBA to, to meet the requirements for this, for the ZBA to approve something. You know, it, it's incredibly difficult to, to make a minor change that, that should be acceptable, that would be acceptable to the planning and zoning commission. It, it may not be able to be able to pass the ZBA, even if the ZBA thought it was a minor change also. So I, I don't, I don't think a solution of, of that ends in, in Club Getaway, having to go in front of the CPA is a good solution. But maybe an overlay zone or a cap to to the number of acreage that can be used in the town of Kent for this use. And if we did that, that would also enable somebody else who wants to do it to come before us and see if we would modify the regulation.
There you go.
And acreage.
There you go.
But it wouldn't, and we wouldn't have to do that, you know, that would be at that time. And we can do this all under a special permit, which, which gives us the, I believe we can, that, that gives us the added ability to put, to put restrictions on the use. So I do think that we can craft a, a regulation that limits that limits the, the possible expansion of this to somewhere that that the commission now or the commission later would feel was, was inappropriate.
Regulation going to look like his, um, his, uh, his outlined scope here?
Could we ask Glenn to take this as input and craft a draft for us? These are, that's sort of what he does, right? I assume he could turn this into something that looks, stand the test of time a little better and read more in line with our existing regulations.
Yeah, I, I mean, and that's a partly a question for Wes and for, and for Donna, but I don't see why he couldn't take this baseline of operations. And then, and, and craft a, a limiting regulation, special permit regulation that will allow Club Getaway to, to operate their business, allow them, if they did have some change or wanted to add some service that wasn't listed here to come back before the commission and look for a change to that special permit. And not, and have, and not have the, the unintended consequences of of a more broader of a more, of a broader regulation that covers the whole rural zone.
So Donna, could we do that?
I mean, Glenn has some of this stuff. But I think with his involvement in the, we write of the plan of conservation and development was not really something that he had wanted to take on or had the time to take on at this point in time. But now that the plan of conservation and development has at least have getting ready, hopefully to be done in September. I don't see why he can't take the information that we already have, and have a lot of it, and send it over to Glenn and see if he can't come up with something. I mean, you know, we, and, and not, and to use David, the brewery as a prime example, I mean, it took us a year to draft that regulation. We worked it through and we came up with something that was really good in the special, in, in, in the rural zone that we had never had before. And that was something that I had wanted for David. Just to at least have some kind of a definition as a special permitted use with conditions based on the size of the property. You know, with the conditions similar to what we had, had put on to David for the brewery. You know, hours of operation, the length of operation. You know, the maximum number of people touring the area, help or state health involvement, moving to be involved in there as well. So I do think that Glenn would be able to pull something out to compile it and make it a special permitted use that, that would work.
Well, that would throw the discussion here. So why don't we do that?
Do we need to make a motion or this is administrative request?
It would just be administrative request.
Great.
So I will shoot him off an email either tonight or first thing tomorrow morning. I mean, poor David's been hanging on by fingers for almost a year. So I don't think anybody anticipated it going that long. So you know, I think it would make him feel a lot more comfortable knowing that that, that he, he's with planning and zoning and can go on those operations and start handling some of those wonderful things.
Wes, if we, if it's, if we, if we go down that road and, and if you get, you know, past your, your your reluctance, you know, I do, I understand you, you feel differently than, than writing regulation. Would you, would you say that we should ask Glenn, if we're going to go down the road of regulation, to recommend which way to regulate per Mr. Miriam's memo of last month? Or should we let him review those and then craft a regulation that, that he thinks fits within for, for us? I mean, because he knows us.
Well, I think that that, his, his memo was part of that baseline. And I think that that would be a, a, a good way to start. And there, there, and there may be others.
I have talked to, to Glenn about it. And I, and I think that he's looking at doing something that is just very simple and basic, in line with all of the other special affirmative uses that are set up right now within Kent. I think he wants to kind of stay within that framework because the framework works well for us. And so, you know, I think Glenn is more inclined to be a little bit more simpler and to the point, doesn't think that my impression was that he did not think we needed to beat a dead horse and that let's just get it done, one, two, three, and it could be an easy an easy addition to the special permanent uses in the world.
Okay, I, I, I agree with that. I, I, I remember though, not though, I remember that the, the whole, the start of this, as David said in the very beginning, David Schreiber, that somewhat falls out of that, of the concert that, that we had. And it's, there should be some protection for the neighbors.
Right.
But there should also be some protection for the business, right? That, that back and forth was, uh,
Right.
It was somewhat painful because there were, the people were looking at it from different perspectives and there wasn't anybody who was looking at it. Well, not too many people were looking at it from a neutral standpoint.
I think bringing David in on the conversation would be good because he's had the conversations with the neighbors and he knows what the neighbor, neighbor's tolerance levels are. You know, so, you know, we can use that information to set some of the conditions based on those tolerance. I will talk to Glenn tomorrow.
Okay. So you hear a motion to table five B one?
I make that motion.
All favor. Okay, so we'll take this up next, next month.
Mark, did you second?
I did.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Now, we're taking the rest of the night off. You can continue working. So long, Donna.
Bye, Glenn.
Bye, good night.
Wes, forgive me, I will, I'll rescind my, my voting status that's, since David's here, is that, is that correct?
What, going forward here?
Yes.
No. No, I think you can stay, don't you?
I, I always thought that, that, that a full commission of seven was the voting and then we, we elevated people to vote if there was one missing.
Right.
Perfect.
Okay. So we're going to de-elevate now.
Hello? Are you there?
Who's this?
This is Barbara Garrig. And I live across the street from Club Getaway and I have no complaints about them at all. At any time.
That's wonderful to hear.
Pardon me?
That's wonderful to hear. That's good news.
Good, yes. I, I like them as neighbors.
That's terrific. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, shall we move on to five B two, Dean Gregory for James Robinson? Is Dean here?
Mr. Chairman, James Robinson, the property.
Yeah, James, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
David.
I, I am here. I'm Dean Gregory. James is far more tech savvy than I, so he, he's done a great job presenting the matters at hand, but I'm here to answer questions too, if need be. My engineer was unable to be here on my behalf.
Terrific. So I think this is progressing quite nicely. It's, it's citing, there's a couple of things I didn't totally understand the retainage, looking at the map. There was an impound area. What, what is an impound area? This entitled a map.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thanks again for, for reviewing this application. And, and I'm happy to sort of go through the whole, the whole presentation if, if, if helpful. I mean, just to quickly go to your question about the empowerment area. So this is a, a, a natural area that is already there, that, that, that actually already collects water, seems to have good absorption of, of runoff. And I think one of the commissioners last time actually sort of saw that, the, the sort of depression that already existed. There's a corrugated metal pipe that already exists with a concrete opening. So at some point someone had, had, had installed that. And so we see that actually as a really good, natural way of, of directing water using the, the swales and, and the, the, the cross slope, sloping of the, the driveway and the terracing that we've, we've, we've put in. So I don't know if that answers the, the question. And Dean, you may have other things you want to, want to say on that.
Well.
Share your screen. Can you share?
Oh, yeah. And let's give you one second. Yeah, here we go. So we're talking about this area just down here.
Correct. I, I just didn't see how the water was directed into it. There was no clear indication of a swale leading to that area.
Yeah. So this is a rather amateur drawing that I, I did, not the engineer. And so but as he explained it to me before this evening, so the swale really is running along, along, yeah, so the water flow is, is designed to go around the house and to be sort of cutting across the driveway and into this swale. And then you see the, the gradient line sort of tilting down towards this natural empowerment area. So that's, again, Dean, you may want to jump in and, and, and correct me if I'm interpreting it incorrectly.
No, that's, that's precisely what, what he has in mind, the engineer, that is. And then that sort of buffers the, you know, the volume as it's coming down.
So I can see that. I just can't see the swell by your, by, by your topo adjustments that lead into the area.
Let me see if I can zoom in a little.
It, it, it looks to me like the swale leads directly into the road.
Right, that's certainly not the intention. So I I know this, this area here, so I can't draw a straight, a straight line in, in the P P F. The intention is that this would run off down into, into here.
Okay, it, it, it just wasn't, it wasn't shown that way, that's all.
Not noted. And, you know, we can certainly correct that. Would, would it be helpful to go through any of the other slides? I'm happy to sort of go back. And I'll try and be relatively quick and then can open it up to, to discussion. So I think, you know, last time we laid out the, I think it was five issues that that the commission had identified in the May meeting. And we explained that we couldn't take everything on within that one month period. But I think now we have hopefully managed to address all the concerns that were, were, were raised. And so I'll quickly go through what we've, we've done with, with the hope that we're in a, in a good position. Again, this was a, a horizon line application that we're in a good position to, to move, move forward. So last time we talked about how the, 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 the site is actually quite similar to Cobble Road, 90 Cobble Road just south of the lot rather than 60 Cobble Road, which I know has been problematic in, in the past. And, and that sort of informed the way that we've designed and redesigned the, the, the site plan. We walked through the sort of existing topography and the fact that there's some natural platforms that we're trying to use as well as the, the, the natural inclines of the, the slope and finding what we call the sort of Goldilocks position that is far enough above and, and removed from the road, but that is also, you know, nowhere near the horizon line. We're not going to disturb anything, you know, for about 150 vertical feet and several hundred feet from the horizon line. So finding that sort of perfect position and, and trying to minimize disruption to the, 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 the road and, and the land. I showed you a couple of, of pictures of, of the current conditions, again, largely either new growth, some deadwood, fallen trees and, and, and branches. There are a few more mature trees, which we would absolutely hope to, to hold on to where we could and preserve what we, what we can. We then walked through the revised plan where we addressed the, the question of the driveway and we looked at sort of five or six different options. And, and this was the one that we felt was, was optimal for a number of reasons. And by doing this, we were going to reduce the amount of area to be cleared and graded by 40% approximately, reduce the length of the driveway by more than 200 feet, while still maintaining a, a barrier between the, the, the road and, and the site, creating some natural terracing that would be good for absorption of any water and actually hopefully absorb more water than is currently the, the case, given the, the, the incline of the slope. And the intent is to plant sort of indigenous native trees and, and grasses and, and shrubs to help with absorption and, and erosion. And we sort of divided the areas into the orange zones, which are those areas that would be disturbed during construction, but that we would want to, to treat. And then the green zones, which are where we really wouldn't have to touch a, a, a tool, which is the vast majority of, of the site. And so today, what, what's new in this presentation is landscaping. And so I'll quickly run through the intent here. So as we, as I worked with landscape architect, the brief was, we want to try and replace or maintain at least 80% of, of, of trees and shrubs and plants in the areas that we're going to be doing construction. Where we can, we want to preserve old growth. We've sort of divided the site into four zones, which we'll walk through in a, in a, in a moment. And each zone has a slightly different objective and slightly different soil and light conditions that we've accounted for. Again, trying to maintain native wildflowers, grasses, trees, shrubs that are known to do well in, in northwestern Connecticut and, and, and have a range of advantages both for pollination and, and again for, for soil conditions and root systems. And so the four zones that we have, have outlined really sort of zones, one and three should be considered together. These are the zones that are directly above and below the, the house. And the, the goal with, 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 with these are a couple of, 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 we, we want to make sure that these are prioritized for root systems and, and water absorption. And so the, the, the landscape architect prioritized plants like hay-scented ferns, Pennsylvania sage, mountain laurel, laurel, silver maple trees. Zone two, this is essentially the area around the house, the, the, the front yard and the backyard as, as it were. And, and this is really for water absorption. So, so water that's coming from the, the slope and landing on the sort of terrace that the house has been built on. And we want something that, we want shrubs that will grow quickly and create ground cover where the land has been, been cleared. And so yarrow, Canada wildry, New Jersey tea, shag bark, hickory, witch hazel, eastern white oak. I'm, I'm told by an expert other things to, to, to plant. And then zone four, this is the area that is closest to the road and our objectives here, certainly absorption again, but also quick screening, things that will be leafy and create a, a natural barrier between the, the, the property and the, the site development and, and the road. And, and so we've identified tools, what marigold, cordgrass, weeping love grass, smooth sumac and American beech as some of the species that we'd want to, want to plant there. There's a little bit more detail. I won't, won't go into all of this unless there's questions, which I probably won't be able to answer myself, but to give you a, a sense of what we were imagining. And obviously the landscape architect has a really wide database of, of, of plants and their particular characteristics, what they, what they will do for the land and where they'll thrive and, and not given the conditions. And so we've lent into, into that. And I feel very confident in the advice that, that she's, she's given us here. And finally, on the landscaping, divided into two phases, one is, is sort of the immediate during construction. So as soon as the, the, the site has been cleared and graded, which we're hopeful could be by fall of this year, to immediately get in heavy seeding of, of, of grasses, potentially grass plugs that already have root systems developed that can even start to develop before the, the winter. And then as spring comes around, we'll be primed to, 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 to take root and, and do that, do that job. And then phase two would be somewhat more aesthetic, but also long-term stabilization. So more of the tree planting again, with the, the goals of further absorbing water and, and creating stabilization. So that, that's the, the, the sort of landscaping. And then going back to this, this chart, a couple of, of sort of key, key features. You know, again, we plan to take advantage of the natural empowerment area at the bottom of the, the, the slope and the 15 inch diameter C M P. The house site, the backyard and the driveway are forming these natural terraces, which should break the flow of, of water. The driveway will be permeable, so will allow runoff to, to, to seep in. It's not going to be hard surface, which should help. And certainly during construction, we would use water bars to, to also break any flow of, of, of water coming down the, the driveway. And the cross slope of the, of the driveway, the curve parts in particular, to direct the water towards swales and, and also the grading in order to, 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 to head towards the, the, the swales. So those are the, the sort of key features here. A, a, a basic cross section, obviously there's, it's quite a varied site, but this gives you an impression. And cut and fill, we feel actually will be exactly balanced. There's no intention to either bring material onto the site nor to remove material from the site, aside from some sand that would be used for the, the driveway during construction. So we've really tried to work with what is, 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 is there. And I, 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 again, not allow anything that is, is, is too, too steep. And again, Dean, you may have other things you want to add to, to this, this, this bit.
That's, that's, you know, not really sand for the driveway, however, just, you know, gravel, obviously, but no, I think you covered that accurately. I mean, basically the, the, I reviewed the site with my excavation contractor and he's, he's quite confident that it's, you know, the manner in which he'll be cutting as he goes up gradient, he'll be able to, you know, disperse an equivalent amount of material in the film zone areas as noted. It's a little difficult to, to pinpoint the exact calculation without, you know, digging, you know, too much deeper into specific depths of each and every contour. So based on his experience, you know, and what he saw on site, he, he does believe that there's certainly more than enough room to dissipate and grade out as needed according to the plan with, you know, the onsite material. You know, generally speaking, you know, the, the question is usually if, you know, if you're going to be removing material and/or are you bringing material in in this particular circumstance? We'd be, you know, just using the onsite material.
And then finally, there's a question about confirming emergency vehicle access. And we've applied the, 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 the template and confirmed that it's a, it's a 32 foot diameter radius. And, and that indeed will accommodate a, a fire truck or other larger vehicles. Should there be some kind of need for, for emergency, emergency access? So that's, those are the, the, the core slides that we submitted and, and, and welcome any, any, any question. Again, really grateful to the commission for your review and hopeful that we, we've provided what's needed to, to be able to move forward.
James, I thank you for this. You've taken this extremely seriously. And your landscaping, I, I think it's a better plan. And again, my only concern was the, the direction of water flow off so that it doesn't go onto the road.
Yeah.
I, I don't see it, but, but you're representing that it will go into this impound area.
And Mr. Chairman, I mean, that's absolutely our intent. And I, I believe we'll have to submit the, 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 the site plan for land use approval and it will be represented on that, on that document.
Does anyone else have any, any comments on this? I, I think they've, they've have done a good job here. have done a good job here. Daryl, you're in the business. What do you think?
I think that their their plant palette's very ambitious, but I think it's very appropriate and creative. I know that they'll probably squeeze down the selection, which might be actually desirable to sort of blend in with what's around it. You don't want to create too much of an island of dense diversity amidst what's there, but I think that the the plant material for the various zones makes sense. You know, I think all this discussion has led to a better result for the applicant and the town. I think most importantly, you know, this property has a portion of it that's in the horizon line district. They chose to cite their home outside of that. So a lot of our discussions are applicable, but aren't necessarily something that it's needed, you know? The bonus for citing your house outside of the horizon line is that you don't have to go through as many hoops. So I think the discussions, once again, have been beneficial, but I think they've gone above and beyond what's required in our regulations.
So can we move on with this application? Do I hear?
Yeah, I I was I was gonna make a motion, but I couldn't get myself off of mute. But I I think they answered all of the questions we had and and more. And so I'll make a motion that we approve application forty-two twenty-two C. Dean Gregory and James Robinson, eighty-two Cobble Road, map nine block forty-two lot twelve, construction of a two-family dwelling, driveway and associated site work in the Horizon Line Conservation District.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Motion approved. James, thank you very much. This is this is a very nice presentation.
No, thank thank you. And as I said at the outset, I mean, we're very committed to being positive contributors to the town and want to do what's right. And and so appreciate all your time and feedback and and you hope to have the results to show for it before too long.
Great, perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, shall we move on to five B three, proposed change in in regulations, electric vehicle charging stations? Donnie, you want to start this off? You're kind of the author of this.
Hi, um. We had, actually, we had talked about trying to figure out what we were going to do with electric charging stations. I thought that we would have had a little bit more time in order to work on this, but I did get an application from the Kent School to put in two of them. So it just kind of pushed us into this whole processing of a regulation type thing. So, you know, I had asked out on the list serve if anybody had had electric vehicle charging station regulations. And I did not get a lot of answers. I got a lot of, oh, yeah, kind of things. You know, we'd love to see what you have when you're done. So I think we're 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 going to be starting this from scratch. One of the things that we can do, which is what we did with with the cannabis, was to actually change just the definition of what is included in retail and do that by changing the definition of a structure. So if you look at the current definition of a structure, it does exclude fences measuring six feet or less. Great, at great driveways, at great walkways, at great terraces and at great patios. And so maybe what we could do is just excluding electric vehicle chargers in that suggested wording and then then we're all set. But I guess my question then becomes, do you want to add a definition of what an electric vehicle charging station is? So these were a couple that I had seen. Actually, I had gotten them from Dwight. So I'm really gearing this towards the Village Center Commercial, Village Center Residential, one and two, maybe. In the rural district, you're not going to get an electric vehicle charging station. You're you're going to get a home charging line in your garage. You might have something that's attached to the outside. So this would just be something that would be in in special permitted situations like the schools and then in the village center.
Donna, I don't I don't know if this is responsive, but my only thought about all this is I would not want to see electric vehicle charging stations on Main Street or three forty-one. Just simply excluding them in the definition of structure would not permit them to be anywhere.
I thought that what we were going to do for the Village Center Commercial, which was something that Glenn had talked about with regard to the plan of conservation and development, was identifying at least four areas within the Village Center Commercial area where they could be put. And that would not include Route seven, but it might include, you know, the Village Green, the Village Center, it might include the Taco Gas Station, it could include the Kent Barnes, that type of thing. You know, putting a couple. What happened was the federal government, according to Gene, has designated Kent as a what did she say, Matt? Do you or David, do you remember?
Sustainability corridor or something like that?
An alternative fuel corridor?
Yeah, I think that was it.
So they're going to be looking for charging stations along the Route seven corridor. I agree with you, Mark. I don't believe that they belong on Route seven. I think I don't think they were taken into consideration with regard to the streetscape. So that's why I think when we start talking about the Village Center Commercial, I think we need to find and identify areas where they should be. My biggest concern when it comes to the Village Center Commercial area is the desire for advertising, because Litchfield just went through something where they wanted to put two charging stations in front of the shop right there and or stop and shop, and it had seven feet worth of advertising on top of it. It was like this number two charger and then a seven-foot banner of all of this different advertising that spun around in the wind. And and that was not willingly accepted by the town of Litchfield, and so therefore it was denied.
But but leaving the preferred areas to the P O C D, the P O C D is not is not enforceable.
No, it's not.
It's recommendation.
It's not at all. So what I'm saying is I did not create anything for the Village Center because I want to see what you guys want to do for the Village Center Commercial based on the recommendation that was made in the P O C.
Well, are we differentiating between free stand, like the idea of a freestanding charging station, the likes, you know, where you see the station purposely built versus the smaller level two units that are more like unobtrusively hung on an existing telephone pole or something? Because one of them is something that the one of them is like a third party is generally trying to make money out of it somehow. And so they're either going to pay for it with like an E V go card or with advertising. The other one might be installed more as a as a convenience, but they're not large, so it I don't know if it's worth having that differentiation or definition. I go, I wouldn't want to see big charging stations on seven either, but if if someone runs a line down the telephone pole and puts, you know, nine by eighteen charger that a parallel parking electric car could use, it doesn't seem like it'd be quite as big an imposition necessarily.
Right, but I think they would have to work with ever source because we don't have, you know, jurisdiction over the the poles that are holding the electric lights.
Right, but I've seen other things like that put on poles. Like, it might be through ever source. I just want I I just want to say it's like we might want to think about it a little bit differently of a of a purpose-built charging station versus one that's hung, the same way we don't necessarily regulate an attachment to something having a permanent location on the ground.
Right.
Like it almost already falls in that, for example, might be one way to look at it.
I was thinking of the ones that are smaller than a mailbox, like the one because we have one out here in in the town, at the town hall. Something similar to that.
Yeah, you hear the one, yeah, the one that's the that's was it's got a standing structure, though. It's pretty relatively, not huge, but I mean, the ones we put at the brewery and at my house are are like the size of an iPad. They're very small.
Right.
Space.
But how long does it take for them to charge? Because that's the other consideration that you want to have.
Well, there's a they're both level two, but the high-end level two is actually pretty it's not a level three charger, but it's it's respectable fast. It's a seventy amp charger. So I think that works out to it's twice as fast as like a typical one. The one at the town is six kilowatts. So this one's at least three times faster, but it's still a level two connector.
As we talk about these different chargers, I I think it's a good discussion, but I I'm not sure how if we're going to create this regulation. I think we can put some restrictions on on advertising or lit up screens or 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 a height restriction. So there aren't these banners or or twisty things flying around in the air, but but we can't, I don't know, I mean, that we can regulate to everybody had to have a these tiny little chargers, you know, if they want to put a commercial charger in. You know, in these chargers that people are going to may put in, hopefully will put in are going to be for pay. They're they're not, you know?
Right, these, I'm not, I'm not I guess, I guess I'm not looking at them as personal chargers because with the new building code that's going into place in October, it's going to be a requirement that the mechanism to charge an electric car in your garage has to be provided for in the new build. It doesn't have to be wired, but it has to have, the 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 guts have to be there so that if you need to use it, you just have to wire. That's going to be part of the building. And that will be something that's inside the garage.
I'm not talking about what goes in somebody's personal garage. I'm talking about what 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 the Kent, what the Kent Village Barnes decides to put in their parking lot or have somebody put in their parking lot where somebody puts in their credit card and pays twenty dollars for for their half an hour car charge or 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 what the Kent Green wants to install to, you know, a bank of of chargers. So there's a whole bunch of chargers which bring people back there and they pay for it.
Right.
That's what we're regulating here and
Right, that's what I'm talking about. Exactly. That's exactly it.
We're having these discussions that all these various little different kinds of chargers, but I'm not sure that that's a that's I I I don't know how we we have that discussion because tomorrow there's another one. And the next day, that one changes.
What is it we want to regulate? Is we just want to regulate a big ugly giant advertising banner on seven? Care otherwise? What what is it that we're trying to control?
Well, what we're trying to control is the fact that if something is a structure, it needs to meet a setback. With with regard to like the chargers at the Kent School, they would have to be forty feet back from the front property line.
Right, but we know we don't, oh, I shouldn't say we know. The idea is that the charger has to be where people park.
Exactly.
So we could just say you're allowed to have a charger within two feet of a parking spot. But it seems like the concerns we have are more about a big flashy distraction as opposed to utility aspect.
My, what I was thinking was that we just eliminate the need to meet any kind of setback and then not allow advertising.
So, and I don't think, I don't care if there is advertising, so long as the thing is back in Kent Green's parking lot where you don't see it from Main Street and not on Main Street.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
Parking lot, parking on Main Street is already very tough. I don't think we should allow any of these chargers on Main Street.
Right.
Even a factor for us, I I mean, I totally agree with you, Mark. But to put it on Main Street, they have to go to the D O T.
Yes.
We don't, we don't control that. That's that's a state, that's a state highway. So what happens on Main Street, we don't control the parking there. We don't if they go to the state and the state says they can put it there. Not sure what we do.
Yeah, I mean, the state would end up having to give them an approach permit in order to do that. And it is out of our hands.
But it could be a turn-in next to the liquor store. This is from Main Street as you walk down the sidewalk.
Yes, it could be. And that's where we need to control the amount of advertising or whether it's lit up advertising.
There's not sure we're forward-thinking enough, but the idea is in ten years from now, the majority of the cars are probably going to be electric. So if you're saying today you don't want to have chargers on the street, I think in ten years, that's going to feel like a pretty backward decision.
But it's in ten years, the technology is going to change. You're not going to need anything that looks like a small mailbox.
Well, I mean, they said that about telephones too, but you know, your nineteen fifty two-wire phone is still works and is still regulatorily applied. And you can upgrade the charger, just you'll you just you know, the new box might go in. It just seems like we want to, we want to encourage this. We want to encourage chargers. We want to discourage advertising. Maybe we leave advertising. You have to respect the setbacks. Otherwise, you know, keep it, you know, limit the total footprint next to a parking spot or something like that.
I don't want to say that there can't be advertising. And I don't, I don't think that's what Mark was saying either, but I think we have to we should limit how much advertising. You know,
Special permitted is you have advertising. If you don't have advertising,
Also, look at the gas station. We don't allow them to have lit up screens and TVs. You know, at their pumps, because it's in the middle of our town. And that should go the same for for electric chargers. I think we we can, we can allow chargers to come in without without having them light up our whole town and light up what ends up being somebody's backyard or outside of somebody's apartment.
That seems reasonable.
Do you want me to take what I've created and send that to Glenn and see if he can tweak it, look at it? Give him another, you know, keep him busy? I mean, I don't, I don't know, you know, I mean, I'm just
Could we, would it be, would the commission agree that we would like to encourage low-profile, non-lit, non-advertised car chargers replaced almost by right convenient to cars? And if you want a big fancy car charger with advertising, you need a special permit. And then if you want to come in and install seven-foot advertising, they can have a discussion with us. And if they want to install something that's going to blend in the landscape and spur a car charge, and they can just do it. Because it seems like that's what everyone is worried about, is having a loophole to put objectionable bright gaudy stuff where it impacts the the feel of the center for the rest of the town.
Do you think affording the ability to come for a special permit for that advertising will will make it more palatable for people to develop? And why why would, what's what's the point of making that a special permit, the advertising?
Because then we would have some control over it.
Yeah, but that's the whole thing. With signage, you can't.
Yeah, we could say, we 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 could simply say that advertising is not allowed. So I just wonder why there's why why we would say if you want more advertising, you just come back to us for a special permit.
No, if you want any advertising, we allow people to put a sign up, but they have to come for the commission, right?
But the sign is not advertising, though. The sign is just either a directional sign, it's a identification sign. It's not saying what, you know, Taco Bell is having a sale and you can get five, you know, burritos and a chiquito for like three, two bucks. So I mean, that's that's what I'm afraid of. You know, I don't, I don't want to see something that's thrown on there because the manufacturer thrown on there because the manufacturer of the charging station has to deal with Subway.
So the, the regulation.
Can I ask, can I ask a pretty naive question here? Sorry to enter. Um, if, do electric cars have GPS systems in?
Yes.
So if you have a GPS system in your car and you're looking for a gas station, it'll tell you exactly where you can go for gas. So if you're an electric car owner, can you hit the button and it says where you can go for recharging?
Some models do.
So isn't that ever, I mean, what do they need advertising for?
I'm not saying.
I'm sorry, that's a really off-the-wall naive question.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying.
Why is there any advertising anyway for where you can get your car charged?
Not advertising for where you can get your car charged. It's advertising for other products.
If, if I own a building in Kent, if I own the Kent Pizza Garden and I want to, I want to put up a, an electric car charger maybe. I want to put up two or three. I don't want to pay to put them up. I want to put them up. So I call some vendor that offers them and they come and install them. They're getting paid for the advertising that are on the car chargers.
Just think of it as a billboard with a charger.
This makes no sense. Sorry, folks.
It's an advertising model to support the.
I'm just having a real hard time that we're sitting here. Um, advertising, if you need your car charged.
It's not going to say that, Alice. It's going to say, come to Subway. So it's going to be a Joe Schmo.
Well, we got, we clearly got to prohibit that.
Well, that's what Mark is saying.
Okay, we got to, we got to prohibit that. If I was thinking you're, you're denying people the right to find a car charge.
No, 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 no. Third-party advertising.
Well, that's not allowed.
Okay.
So the, so we already have the, the verbiage in our regulations about signage that you can't have backlit signs. And that is what I believe, uh, prevented the gas station from, from putting up the pumps that have the TVs and stuff attached to them that have advertising flashing on the screen. Is that, is that correct, Donna?
Yes.
And thank you.
Yeah. So that would, that would, that's verbiage that already exists would also cover the car chargers?
I don't know. I'd have to look at that and say.
Not structures, I don't know.
Right. So that I think that, that's, we already have this in place. So as we craft these, a definition that's going to allow people to put these electric car chargers in that I think everybody in the commission is all for. Somehow, how do we connect or do we take that same verbiage and plug it into here? So that will curb the type of advertising that may go on these in the VR one and VR two.
And commercial.
And commercial, yeah.
You know, I think that, um, that, that every single location is different. My concern is more that these are, these are filling stations. Uh, this is something where you go, you park. And, and, um, so there, there's more involved than just the advertising, it's, it's, it's parking, it's traffic, it's location. I mean, it's the kind of thing that begs a special permit to me. But, and not an outright, um, right, just not permitted outright. Seems like every case is different and, and, and would be different.
I, I agree with you, Wes, and I also agree with some of the other comments, you know, we're a charming, I hate to use the word charming over and over, but we're a, um, authentic uh, New England village. And I, I personally feel that these chargers should be off of seven. They should be in some of the parking lots or an area that is a bit more discreet. I, I would be concerned about losing the authentic architectural qualities of our town with these things running up and down Route Seven. And the other concern is we're a, a little bottleneck town much of the time. And I think those would just tie up the town and the traffic further. If you're going to, uh, charge your car, you're going to need time and those should be in a place where, you know, i- i- it's not as slightly and it allows the car to have enough time to charge and you're not, you're not blocking up, you're not bottlenecking the town with it. I personally think, you know, David's right, in ten years, people are going to go like, why? Why are they not on Main Street? Why? Because we're trying to preserve the, the, you know, New England traditional character of our town.
Now, I just, I'll say that the people don't come here to charge. They come here to do the things they would normally do, shop, eat, walk around. The charging is a side effect of leaving their car there while they're doing the, the other things. So it's, you have to switch the mentality a bit. You drive to a gas station to charge up or to gas up your car, but you charge where you happen to park to do the other things that you're doing.
I, I would hate to see them on seven because it's going to take a while. And you're going to eliminate that constant switch of cars that are parked in front of Wilson's and Gifford's. Um, you know, on, and you know, people just running in to pick up a cup of coffee somewhere. And so therefore to me, they don't belong on Main Street. And, and I, I think they would, especially with the, with streetscape starting fairly soon, I'd hate to see streetscape making everything look beautiful and then having the car chargers. So I, you know, we're, we are a walking town. And so I think putting them in the shopping centers would encourage that, you know, you park the car, you get out, you walk, you're going to walk, you might not walk past, say, the Heron Gallery if you were parked at the corner, but if you're parked, you know, in the back here and you want to get to Kingsley's, you're going to walk past the Heron Gallery. So, you know, it kind of gives you a little bit more walkability um, and more time to spend in the town to actually see what's going on there. Um, that's why I'm looking at, you know, and I agree with Glenn. Glenn's recommendation was finding four separate locations um, in the town and kind of placing them in.
I have a, a, another question that may be a little cog in this. And how do we address, for instance, if it, at the Kent Center um, in the middle of town, they have a pretty good sized parking lot. And let's say they want to put up five electric car charging stations. So how does that affect the allocated number of parking spaces?
Right.
Or for the businesses there?
Right.
Where does that, because those people who are using those, those, that, that takes, that may or may not take away five parking places. I'm not sure how to look at that because you could say, well, they're going to park there. So they're going to walk into the Kent Village stores. That's what the parking lot is for. And they're going, then they're going to walk into town, which the Kent Village, they don't like the people do there, but of course that's what everybody does. And, um,
She used to come running out of the store.
She did, she did. And he took those two spots in front of her store. I'm in trouble. But, uh, I just wanted to bring that up to everybody to, I, I don't know how we deal with that or if we deal with that.
We, we already see that, you know, electric cars get one or two special slots right now. A lot of parking lots that remain empty because there's not a lot of electrical cars around yet. Um, I have a feeling that planning in generals and industry is going to take some time to figure out exactly how this transition is going to impact things. You know, if you say, we'll put the electric cars in one place, we still have, you still have gas cars parking in front of Wilson's and then they might leave their car there and walk around. It's almost like the, um, if you pretend that if, if chargers don't exist, if electric cars and gas cars are going to behave the same, the question is of electric, if charges do exist, does that somehow change the behavior of just the electric cars? I, I, I would almost suggest that maybe it doesn't, that people are going to drive and park and do the things they do, but charging is a, uh, is a side effect of what they would normally do. Right? You know, quaint New England towns, if it was really a quaint New England town, we'd have a bunch of horses. So I think now we have gasoline-powered cars driving around and, and motorcycles. So, uh, it's, it's, um, it, it just seems like it's a remedy to try to reduce the number of times cars are going to the gas station instead, you know, improving their quality and all the other things we're supposed to hopefully see out of this transition.
Yeah, it's, it's a different case. You go to the gas station, you fill your car in four minutes. You go to a charging station, it takes you half an hour.
But you're not waiting there to charge. You're parking there and then you go in and doing your stuff. You're at Wilson's having your coffee. You're looking in the bookstore. I mean, I don't know if anybody, I don't think there's any support for the idea that a, a electric car driver is going to go somewhere just to charge in a quaint New England town, right? You do that in the garage.
I think they're going to charge because they're out of juice.
You're absolutely incorrect. When people are driving up from New York and going up to Massachusetts, they're going to be looking, where can I charge my car? Not as a secondary thing to where they want to go shopping. They're looking for a charging station to re, to recharge their car. And that's, I'm totally in favor of this, that we ought to have these charging stations in the parking lots at the, at the, you know, uh, Kent Center Green or Town Green, whatever.
People are driving long distance. I think that's good. They're going to stop. They're going to park, charge your car. They're going to have dinner.
Hundred percent. That's why we still encourage it. Absolutely. But it's not secondary. People are, you, you seek out charging stations and then do your shopping where you can charge your car.
That's partially a side effect because they're still appearing everywhere. I think that starts to disappear as things, as they are, or anyway, I, we're, we're going down a lot of rabbit holes here without a lot of data.
Question.
Their side.
I have a question, David, I, I, because I'm not sure exactly how this works, but I'll use the Danbury Mall for an example. They have, I don't know how many charts, but they, they have a pretty good number of, of chargers in their parking lot there. And, um, I assume that you can't go and put your car in there and walk away for the day. That, that somehow the, you know, if you park in front of the charger, you're, you're paying to charge your car. And when your car is full,
Yeah. You start, you, you pay a penalty.
By the minute, right.
Yeah, you, you.
That's how it works already. I mean, that, that, that's how it works already. That's, but that was my question because I wasn't sure if, if that's how it works. I just wanted to understand that.
I don't know if it works that way universally. On Tesla, if you take your, your car to a Tesla supercharging site, uh, they cha, they charge you a penalty, uh, if you leave your car there more than two minutes after it's full.
Yeah, same with the other, all the other chargers that I'm aware of. It's the same thing unless they're free like Whole Foods or somebody, but the ones in Danbury Mall, it's the same thing. They charge you. If you're, if you're not there, they'll either get ticketed or you'll be charged. It's like any other, you know, parking rule.
And not for nothing, um, people do in fact look for charging stations when they're planning their trip. So if they're, if, if they want to drive from, from Manhattan to the Berkshires and they, they can only go two hundred fifty miles, they're going to look for a spot. And if there's no charging station in Kent that they can find, they're going to go to, they're, they're going to go up Route twenty-two and they're going to stop in Dover, right? So um, it's, it's not just a question of, of, you know, charging, as, as Mark said, you're charging because it's a necessity. And you're going someplace, you're charging. If you're planning a trip, that's what you're doing. I agree with that. My brother has an electric car and when they go to Vermont or, you know, up to Maine, they, they know where they're going to stop before they go. And they, and they try to make it a nicer stop than, than just stopping at, at a rest stop along the highway where they have to kill a half an hour while the car charges, which is horrible. So they, they would drive to Kent on their way up to Vermont, not because I live here. And, um, you know what I mean? You know, it's, though, I think people do, they map this out. They find a nicer place because they know they're going to be stuck there for a period of time.
So, so we, we, we batted this around a lot and I don't know if, if Donna, we've helped Donna in, uh, in, in solving this, um.
Done it all.
This regulation.
Our, our work here is done.
But, but one thing that, that I feel that we should not do is exclude it as a, uh, a structure. Be, because that could proliferate. That, that means it could basically, it's not a structure. It can go anywhere.
Right.
Yeah. So I, I, I don't think that one is a direction that
Right.
that we ought to take.
What if we, what if we get a special permit? I mean, then, you know, then so when somebody comes in, they can, they can come and say, and we can look at it and say, well, yeah, that's a good place. Or they want to put in three, you know? Uh, and the problem with leaving it as a structure is that it really precludes and what might, may be a really optimal place to put it. You know, it, it, it really, it limits that a great deal.
I think when, excuse me, I think when you start looking at it as a special permitted juice, you're going to defeat all of the, um, all of the emphasis that's being put on the use of electric parts. I think what they're, in other words, they're, they're trying to make it as simple as possible for people to switch from a gas vehicle to an electric vehicle. And that means finding places to charge it and therefore letting people put them in as easily as possible instead of making them a special permit. That's just my take from all of the, the, um, from all, all of the edicts that are coming down from government.
Yeah, well, it, it may be easier, but there may be a lot of issues too.
Right. So, um, what I'd like to do, um, is, I have a con, I have to talk to Glenn on anyway, um, uh, about, um, Getaway. And, and I can throw this on there as well. And let's see what he seems to think. And then maybe we can even get something checked off of the plan of conservation and development before it's even adopted.
Now there, now that's a plan.
That's a plan, right?
That's a good plan.
Um, and you know, I think, I, you know, it was suggested that maybe it would be a good idea to create a subcommittee to, uh, to create regulations. Since there's going to be a lot of things that are going to be kind of passed down the line. So that's something to think about. You know, just setting up kind of a, you know, a three or four-person subcommittee to, to do like the initial work of creating, uh, you know, regulations or changes to regulations. I wouldn't recommend it now until the housing affordability plan is done and the plan of conservation and development is done. If you guys are stretched pretty thin, thin right now. Um, and then maybe it'll be October and you guys will have it. My recommendation would be to table this and, um, and, and we can come back to it.
I make a motion that we table this.
I will second that motion.
I, I just had a question. So until we come back to this, you're going to be regulating, um, electric charging stations as a structure and subjecting them to setbacks?
Pretty much. Either that or they have to go for a variance.
And it seems like in the short term, most chargers are going to be self-selective about being in practical locations if you take the advertising away. But, um, you know, in most parks, a lot of parking lots are on the edges of property lines. So if you want the chargers associated with a parking slot, you're going to be in violation of, you know, a setback on the parking lot.
Right, right. And that's what's driving this whole thing because the Kent School has a, has a company that they want to put two of them in in the parking lot next to the facility building. And of course, the company is pushing it because they want a sale. I don't think that the Kent School is pushing it because first of all, they're not in session yet. And, you know, they've gone this long, so they can wait a little bit longer. But I think that the charging company, that, you know, that the manufacturer or the representative is the one that's pushing for the installation of.
The school also wants to do it because quite frankly, their parents come up to bring their kids and see their kids. And a lot of them are in electric cars and they want them to be able to come to the campus and.
Right. I think part of, I don't think this was for the parents because of where it's actually located. I think this is for the employee.
Okay.
I, I would definitely second the, uh, second the idea, um, of when we're talking about changing regulations to establish a subcommittee, which where there's a few. When we're talking about changing regulations to establish a subcommittee, which where there's a fewer number of people who are. Running through all of the issues and talking it through and then having something to present to the to the full commission. I think that's, I think that's. I mean, yeah, I'm in favor of that.
I'm too. I think that works well.
Okay.
Perfect. Alright, so all in favor of tabling? Okay, uh, motion is tabled. So Adam, as I said, I'm gonna have to move on. Could you? Handle it from here?
I'll try.
Okay. I'll say good night.
Take care, Wes. So we have um. We're on to new business. To uh six A one application. Number fifty-seven twenty-two C and fifty-eight twenty-two S P. Michael. Deep and Philo. Earth Technologies for the South Kent School, forty Bulls Bridge Road, map six block thirty-nine, lot nine, installation of a. Ground mounted solar array.
You wanna elevate somebody since Wes left as well?
Um, yeah, I'll. Elevate Matt and um I can't malve- um elevate Rich because uh to the South Kent School.
Right. So I'm gonna take Rich and I'm gonna throw him in the waiting.
Okay.
And I believe that Mike is here.
And this is, this is a public hearing, isn't it?
This is a public hearing, so there should be um a legal notice. Um.
Yeah.
That you would need to read into the record and then open the public hearing.
Okay, yeah. You've got. I can just read just just the public notice part on the bottom. Oh, she left. Okay, so um. Town of Kent Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearing, the Town of Kent and Planning and Zoning Commission shall. Hold a public hearing via Zoom meeting on Thursday. July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, beginning at seven o'clock P M to discuss the possibility. And act on applications number fifty-seven twenty-two C and fifty-eight twenty-two S P. Michael Dant- Deep Penfellow. Earthling Technologies for South Kent School, forty Bulls Bridge Road, map six. Block thirty-nine, lot nine, installation of a ground mounted solar array. Any correspondence documentation will be attached to the agenda, which can be found on the town's website. At this hearing, persons may participate and may be heard. Uh, the Zoom meeting number can be located on the official agenda. That will be filed with the town's webs, Town of Kent's website, a minimum of forty-eight hours. Prior to the official Zoom meeting. Adam Manus, Vice Chairman. And um, do I have a motion to open the public hearing or do I just open the public here?
You're muted, Donna.
You can go ahead and just open the public.
Okay, so I'm gonna open the public hearing at eight thirty-six P M. So um. Why don't we uh ask or ask uh Mister. Deep Penfellow to um. To talk to us about the application.
Yes, then first off, thank you to the committee for having us here today. And to hear about our projects. And I'm gonna talk about the installation uh uh in the overall scope of work, but I'm gonna defer to my. Colleague Stefan and to talk about a little background on the project.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Stefan Hartman here because because of Rich's, you know, recusal from this process. I've been working really close with Mister Chavka. Over the last year. Little over a year as the school has been exploring the solar project. So if there's any general questions about how they got here or motivations. Um, I might be able to shed some perspective on that for the committee.
So can you tell us about the um? About the application, what does the school want to do?
Yeah, truly. I'm gonna share my screen and uh we can. Talk through. Project. So these plans are submitted uh along with the zoning application. And this shows the plot uh that South Kent School is is based on. It's a hundred fifty acre plot. And our proposed array location is centered just behind Gilder Gilder Hall. Um, and the total array size is about point one five acres. So eh although it is a ground mounted array, it is a modest. Here's a zoomed in. Site plan that shows the. Three arrays in the field behind Gilder Hall that is currently unused and the the it's a. The distance from Gilder Hall is approximately a hundred feet. Now, these are three one hundred panel arrays totaling. Uh, one hundred thirty-eight kilowatts. Now, these. Uh, I'll show just. Another slide here. So the arrays themselves are fastened via grounds crew. And they sit relatively low off the ground. Uh, they the back edge is sitting around six feet. The. Array is interconnected into the Gilder Hall. Uh, electrical system and will be tied in with their existing P V array. Now, this array is much larger than their existing. We're hoping to. Alleviate some of their electricity needs uh with this. So.
Does this provide electricity for the whole campus or just for Gilder Hall?
Just for Gilder Hall. And with that, um, unless Stefan has anything, I I'll open it up to you questions.
You about covered it. Thanks, Mike, but I'm happy to answer any questions that might come up.
The this the legs of the structures, they're gonna, they're going to be set um on footings. Is that correct?
Correct. There are ground screws. Um, the. The whole intention of our installation process is to disturb the least amount of of earth as possible. So we do have a an electrical trench that um follows the. Shortest distance from the array to the to the actual building, um but. No large trenching will happen uh in in between the array here. It's it's just a a ground screw going directly into the earth.
What happens? I'm just curious, what happens with the the ground screw if you hit a uh if you hit a rock?
Now, that is a very common thing with ground mounted solar arrays and and there are two main. Um, solar array, ground mounted solar array installation practices and and the ground screw. Uh, actually alleviates some of that bedrock issue. So if there, the other. Way to install ground mounted solar is by pounding I beams into the ground. And when you hit bedrock, you have to. Pull the I beam out, drill into the bedrock and reset the beam. With the ground screw, we're able to drill. Uh, into the beam and achieve the correct structural va- uh value.
Does um? Does anyone else have any questions? Donna, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. You know, the only thing that the only question I have is what's the life? Expectancy for these these solars? I mean. Are they are they gonna be putting and being there for, you know, indefinitely or like how long? What do they have to be switched out at any point in time?
That is a great question and. Solar panels, they degrade very slowly uh over a period of around anywhere from twenty-five to around forty years. You're at year forty, you're not gonna be producing nearly as much power, but you will still be producing power. There are other components of the system that will be need to need to change out, but they're much smaller components than the P V modules themselves. Uh, it is very common for P V modules to last twenty-five years.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a question. I'm just curious. Um, I don't know what the answer is. Uh, will these arrays be fully visible from um? Bulls Bridge Road?
They, no, they shouldn't be. They're behind Gilder Hall and they're well um into the interior of the campus.
This is exactly the kind of thing we're supposed to be encouraging, so. Certainly in favor.
Maybe uh. You can give us our. Screen back.
Adam, before, um, actually, yeah, you can. I just, but my my question is, um, on the the three page P D F document that's titled. Hold on, let me get there. Um, the photo will take energy systems, South Kent School. That's that's on the first page. There's a, there's a blue uh line that shows some perimeter. And I wonder if that's depicting the property line.
That is correct. I I pulled that from the town G I S map. And that is depicting the property line of of the South Kent. School, as I understand it.
Yes, that's right.
So the the scout, the 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 school then owns all of those agricultural fields up and behind up on the hill. Almost up to to Berkshire Road, right?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and I'm I'm sorry, if you answered this question already, um, how how far off the ground um are these arrays in the front and in the back? I mean, on the low side and the high side, I should say.
On the low side, we're looking at thirty-two inches and in the high side, uh seventy-four inches.
Are they gonna have to go out there and shovel them?
No, the the snow will, uh, it it'll sit a little bit. There is a good tilt to them and it will, they'll. It'll slide up. So there you do have some production in the winter, so some. Larger arrays will, you know, have mechanisms or people will. Shovel off of it off of the array so you can produce more. If there's some low tilt to an array, but. It's not going to be needed in in this case.
And the and the the orientation of them is um just. Is it due south?
Correct, yeah, the the optimal orientation for P V panels in our. Latitude is is du- due south. And with a ground matter ray, we're able to to fully direct them that that direction.
And the topography there. We know that campus is on a hill. Does that hill go down? Does is is it full south or? Um, will the the low side of those of that array be? Um, higher off the ground. Than the thirty something inches that you said um on one end because of the topography and the and the. And the way that it's facing.
The topography in that area is, um, there is some elevation as you move back to the to the third array. The way that the racking company or the the way that we install this. They have the ability to. Kind of. Use the the installation into to map out the array as they go. So there will be some. Some areas where the 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 array will be slightly uh higher than others. But the the overall goal is to keep the array as aesthetically pleasing as possible. So it. Stays in a, you know, if you're look, if you're standing in front of it and you're looking straight on, it will look straight. So. Naturally, if the topography of of the location is um rolling in in. And it's relatively mild, um, there will be some natural height changes from the bottom of the array to the ground.
And I'll add that the the lower edge of the array isn't necessarily level. It's like Mike said, there's usually, there's, it's a, we're striking a balance between keeping it. Um, straight while still tracking periodically with any undulations in the ground. But it won't follow every undulation of the earth. Well, we'll have to. Find a happy medium. But the the land back there does elevate south to north. So the arrays are actually going to be going uphill as we go from the front row to the back row, which is favorable in a in a system like this.
Thanks, Elena. I'm sure that I don't have to ask this. I'm sure the school has been incredibly careful, but I feel remiss if I don't ask about the safety of them. It's a boy's school. My son went there. I know it well. And uh. I look at those and I look at, wow, what a great place to run across and um and jump off the back. So I just, I need to ask you about that.
The, in terms of tamper proofing, any electrical wiring is tucked in and enclosed. Uh, in in designed, it it's kind of a code requirement to make sure that it's it's safe and relatively tamper proof. Um, like you said, you know, the very adventurous boys, if they want to climb up on top, we're not gonna be doing anything to prevent that from happening. I think that the school's gonna have to enforce their own. Um, you know, controls, uh, but the system itself would, uh, as as Mike said, it's a gentle slope, you know, about two and a half feet. On the front end and about six in the back. So it's it's not so steep that there's a real hazard to somebody falling off, but. If if boy got up there and and bounced around, I mean, they could cause damage to the panels.
Sure.
Um, so we're we're hoping that doesn't happen. But there wouldn't necessarily be an electrical risk uh in that case.
Do you are using micro inverters or do you have three main inverters for the strings?
There are string inverters uh on this system.
How many?
There are eight string inverters.
Okay. And they're just mounted on the side under the array?
Correct. We'll have a couple extra. Ground screws and and then we mount them to the back of the array tucked behind. Uh, typically, electrical equipment. Is, you know, trying to hit it as much as possible.
If I was to say that there was one one kind of tamperable device on the system, it's the safety disconnect switch. So the one thing that somebody could mess with would actually shut the whole system down and make it as safe as possible.
Thank you.
And that's easy, you know, and that's that's easy to operate for obvious reasons.
Does anyone else have um? Any questions or concerns that they want to bring up before we close the public hearing? Uh, once we do, we can't get any other information.
So, Adam, I I I think that your point is well taken. Um, you know, the the. Um, the array that we approved of in Marvelwood, both of them had uh had had fences around them. They weren't tremendous fences, but they were certainly a. Deterrent fences. So it might be worth, it it might be worth suggesting. Offense.
It is, it is literally right behind a dorm.
Yeah, that's the fifth form, right?
I think so, yeah. I suppose that can always change, but I think so, yeah.
Yeah, fence might not be such a. A fence might not be such a bad idea. The, the Fronius twelve K inverters, right? They can be fairly easily, and I think that, as I recall, they have controls on them unless you can lock them out. Because boys will be boys.
So, I mean, I think it'd be a good idea if you guys discuss with the school, and I think would be good for the school to do something to help prevent the boys from their new jungle gym, but, but I think that's for the school to, to do, and I'm sure that, and I'm, I have no doubt that the South Kent School will do what they have to do to to keep the
We, we, we did discuss a fence with the school. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's a pretty standard option. It does happen sometimes. They have opted not to include the fence. I think aesthetically, it's better without it. But they do know that if there was ever a tampering issue or concern that could grow, there's nothing that prevents them from adding it and enclosing the array with a fence or some kind of shrubbery that could, you know, make it, you know, uncomfortable for, for kids to get back there, you know, prickly bushes, if you will. So there's, there's a myriad of solutions that could be employed down the road if they observe a problem.
Okay.
At least that's how the discussion went.
Then if there's nothing else, if anybody, nobody else has anything to say, then I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move we close the public hearing.
Duncan.
All in favor? The public hearing is closed at eight fifty-four PM.
There are waivers.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, um we have an application before us.
We've got waivers before you, before you move to accept the application.
Traffic study, water. They actually gave us a site plan with the location of everything.
Right. So I think it's the things that are highlighted. So three, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
So do I have a motion for those waivers?
Yeah, I'll move that we grant the waivers as requested in document six eighty-one.
A second?
A second.
Who was that, Matt?
Yes, Donna.
Thank you.
And it was five, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, right?
So we didn't say fourteen? No, it's just thirteen. I don't see a fourteen.
We're done with the special permit checklist, right? Are we talking about?
I'm looking at the site plan application checklist.
Looking at the site plan application. I'm on the wrong one. Yeah, so it's three, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
So I think that that's what the initial, at least, I thought that's what the initial motion was for.
Yep.
Okay. And Matt, you agree with that? You seconded it? Any discussion? Then all in favor, please raise your hand. Or is it aye? So motion granted. And then there's a, is there a second set of waivers?
No. Yeah, so it would just now be the application itself.
Okay. So discussion on the, on the application? Or a motion to accept the application?
I would make a motion to accept the application numbers fifty-two dash twenty-two C and fifty I'm sorry, and fifty-eight dash twenty-two SP, Michael D. Penfilo, Earthlight Technologies for South Kent School, Forty Bulls Bridge Road Map, six block thirty-nine lot nine, installation of ground-mounted solar array system.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hands or say aye. Motion granted. So your, your application was accepted. You're all set.
Very much.
But what will happen is, I have to put a notification in the newspaper. Today is Thursday. Probably will go in either Saturday, Sunday, or Monday, depending on what the newspaper decides. And then once it goes in, it's fifteen days from that time period that you can apply for your zoning permit and then apply for your building permit. You do need to contact Toronto Area Health. They're gonna, they're gonna want to see where you're putting this. I did talk to Kathy, so if you want to give me a call tomorrow, I can give you her contact information. She's on vacation this week and will be back in the office on Monday.
Great. I'll give you a call tomorrow, Donna.
Okay, sounds good, Mike. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so on to six B one, establishing a hiring subcommittee for a land use administrator position. I don't know why we're doing this. We should just not accept
Sorry.
any resignations at all. It should be subject to vote. But seeing, we do have to, we do have to establish subcommittee. So
I did talk to Wes this afternoon. I, I did create a hiring subcommittee in Inland Wetlands with Lynn Werner as chairman of Inland Wetlands and Paul Gagin. Lynn thinks that it would be good to, to have the chairman, and so I did ask Wes and Wes said that he would like to be on. Yes, he would do it. So we just need one more person unless you feel that you want to have more than two people on the subcommittee.
I think unless anybody else feels differently, I think, you know, it two people is good because it all, it all will come to the commission, but if, but if we have three commissioners that want to be on it, then we can have three commissioners. Does anybody have an opinion about this?
Two's fine. Three's fine, too.
I think that's what, that's what I was gonna say, Mark. You should, you should get at least one more.
I'm sorry, Adam. Aren't we, isn't PNC a lot larger commission than Inland Wetlands?
Yeah, Inland Wetlands has some, seven members, planning and zoning has ten.
So I just, maybe we should have three.
I'm, I'm fine with three. It was, I think that works. I like, I like an odd number. So Wes is, Wes is the first one. We need two more. Do I hear any volunteers or do I get to appoint?
Alice, I think you'd be great at it. Alice, I think you should, you should be on the committee.
You do.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Okay, so we have Alice and
Well, I mean, you're the only one. Maybe nobody else thinks that.
Oh, no, you're good.
I think Alice would be great at it.
Yeah, you're great.
Does anybody else want to be on this committee or anybody else volunteering for it? I'm happy.
Come on, Darrell.
I have seen a bunch of land use enforcement officers, so I'll, I'll do it.
That's great. Okay, so we have Wes, Darrell, Alice. We don't have to make a motion for that, right? That's just
No, no, you do. You have to make a motion for the creation of a subcommittee whose sole purpose is to interview and find a replacement for the current land use administrator and make that presentation to the board of selectmen for final, for, for confirmation.
Okay, so I need somebody to make that motion, please.
So it's right from the subcommittee to the board of selectmen?
The subcommittee makes the decision. And they bring their decision to the board of selectmen, but the board of selectmen can go ahead and extend the offer.
They're not going to bring it to the rest of the commission first?
No, they don't have any jurisdiction over us, the hiring of this position.
Okay. No, what they mean is the, is, is that the subcommittee is not going to go back for maybe even tacit approval to the full planning and zoning commission before they make the recommendation to the, to the board of selectmen.
That's up to you guys. You know, I mean, if that's, if you would like to do that, you can.
I, I would expect that it would, the subcommittee would at least run it past everybody so we all know what's going on before it goes.
I would, I would agree with that.
Okay, all right. So then it would go to the, it would go to the selectmen. It would go to the first selectman from the, the entire plan of, of planning and zoning commission as opposed to the subcommittee.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I think so. You know, the, the, the mechanics for that could be that, you know, from the subcommittee to subcommittee comes back to the, to the full commission for approval, and then the subcommittee makes the recommendations of the planning and to the board of selectmen. That, that, that could work, too.
So I actually, I think that's, I think that's a better way. I, I kind of thought that, that's what it would have been, you know? I just thought that the subcommittee would, would present, present what they found in, in their choice to, to the whole commission so we can all give our head nod.
Okay.
Then, and then the subcommittee would then go to the selectmen. And, and as a sub, subcommittee, give it to them.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Matt.
We have a second?
Duncan.
Thanks, Mark.
Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand, say aye. Passed. And then, do we have to nominate? The three people are, or that's done, we've already appointed them, or do we have to make a motion to appoint Wes and Alice?
The name, I'll put the names in Matt's motion. The creation of a subcommittee consisting of Wes, Adam, and, 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 I mean, Wes, Alice, and Darrell.
Okay. Then that's great. And, and Matthew, that's good with you is that motion is amended like that and
That's, that, that's how I intended, intended my motion, Adam. So, yeah, that's, that's fine with me.
And whoever was the second, you're good with that, too.
That was Mark was the second.
Mark, so you're good with that also?
Yes.
Okay, great. Then we're all set.
So what's gonna happen now is I would like to be able to post the, the opening the week of July eighteenth on the town's website and leave it sitting there for about two weeks. Let's see what kind of responses we get and then I'll decide whether or not, I'll let you guys know. I'm not gonna make the decision in the vacuum as to whether or not, you know, you want to put it on indeed based on the responses that we get from the posting on the town's. Both Lynn and actually me, both Lynn, me, and Paul are going to be on vacation the first week in August. So the second week in August, I'll have an opportunity to look to see what I've received and then I'll, you know, forward them around to you guys and then we can set up some kind of subcommittee meeting to review the applicants via Zoom.
Is there a, an association of land use administrators that we could post this to?
I can post it on the list serve and then there's the Connecticut Association of Zoning Enforcement Officers. We can, and we can put it on, I can put it on the Casio website.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So six B two, the reappointment of ARB members Ellen Corcelle and Peter Hanby to two-year terms ending August second, twenty twenty-four.
And I, I would make that motion to, to reappoint both of those members to two-year terms.
Okay.
Pete Hanby is, is the, you know, Ellen is the chair.
Yeah.
And she, 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 she does a good job and Pete Hanby is the, is the architect on the, on ARB. So
We need him.
Happy that he's re-upping.
Yeah. Well, we need, I think we, we have to have one architect.
Correct.
If I remember correctly. So, so any discussion beyond that?
Just thanks to them both.
And, and thanks for, yeah, I mean, they really, we need them there and that's great and thanks to both of them. And so all in favor, raise your hand or say aye. Motion passed. And then six B three, update on application nineteen dash sixteen C Vincent W. Forresty for Scott Mackesy at Zero Kent Hollow Road.
So this is that huge undertaking that has, has been on Upper Kent Hollow. And I just wanted, I had gotten a complaint. So I did call Vinnie and said, oh, we haven't really chatted in a while, so what's been going on there? And he, he told me that he is not the sole that the trucks that are coming through Upper Kent Hollow are not coming just for him, that there is other truck work that's being done in the area. And that he is now at a point in the project where they are topsoil and seeding. The upper pond is complete. That's all done. They're working on this hillside from the upper driveway to the lower access driveway. He's put down a bunch of topsoil. That has now been seeded and is covered with erosion matting. From there, they're gonna go to the hill for the lower access driveway to just above the lower pond. And once that's all graded and, and filled with topsoil and seeded, he's gonna then start working on the on the pond. The pond had silted in because he really hadn't been working on the project because he was busy working on the house that Mr. Mackesy was building on the lake. They did call in Arthur Howland, who came and looked at the pond and he, you know, they basically said, don't touch it, leave it as a silting pond. So everything is being caught there. Once he gets done doing his topsoil and seeding, anchoring, he's gonna then get a permit to clean out that pond and then get that pond up and running. He said they've, he only brings topsoil in Monday through Wednesday. And his topsoil drivers have been instructed to go slow and not use the Jake grates, which is something that evidently makes a lot of noise. And, you know, he's, he, he had a big truck there today of, filled with water. He said, everything is dry and all the seeds that he put down, the seeding is just not, not germinating. So he brought in a tanker today to spray that down. So, you know, hopefully, he said he'll be done soon.
Donna, is that the same complainant who we heard from, it's gotta be four years ago now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
This is somebody else.
So when, 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 when we had that complaint, whenever it was ago, we made it pretty clear, I thought to them, that number one, they couldn't, they couldn't be using that property for, for storage of material. And that they were from, from the house that they were building on the lake. And then I, I thought that we told them that, that they had to be done within a certain period of time.
I don't know if we told them they had to be done within a certain period of time. We did tell them that, you know, he couldn't. I'll, I'll check the file.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This was back in, there was a note to the file in two thousand and nineteen.
If I remember correctly, maybe I'm remembering a different time, Matt, but I, I kind of thought the way it ended was we were just kind of almost mediators between the between the Maxie and his guy and, and the, and the neighbor and, and the, the trucker was, was you know, it, it was Forresty, Forresty was very good and he you know, he, he told him to ensure them and he would not be trucking during the time. you know, he, he told him to ensure them and he would not be trucking, uh, during the time. So it was really disturbing them.
Right, right.
And I didn't think we, we made any decisions about what they could or couldn't do that I remember.
Yeah, no. But after checking the file and the regulations, I found that the permit was granted in two thousand and sixteen was for a filling operation. Four thousand cubic yards of fill from the Lake Warmog property. Removal of twenty-five hundred cubic yards from the Kent property back to the Lake Warmog property. And the remainder of the fifteen hundred cubic yards to remain on the Kent property. They agreed to that. And I believe that that's what they did. So right now what he's doing is he's just, now they're at the point where they're topsoiling. Um, the, um, all the hillsides, securing them, um, preventing them from roading by planting them and putting the erosion mats on top.
So how long, how, how long are the, does a special permit last? Is it?
It's not, it was not a special permit. Um, it was just the, the only reason that they got a permit. According to the regulations, you can, you can move dirt around on your property for as long as you want. But what comes into play is amount coming off or amount going in. And, and so that's what we pulled the permit for was for, was for that regulation because he was using that area to take care of the dirt that was coming off of the property that McAfee bought over on Lake Warmog.
So what sort of permit was that that we granted?
That was, I think it was just a site plan.
And a, and a, and a site plan has no expiration date?
Yeah. So right now what he's doing, he can bring in the fill now for agricultural purposes. And that's what he's doing. So they can bring in, how about Rich? Um, sorry, Rich.
Hi, Rich.
So I'm sorry, let me just ask one, one more question, Adam. The, the, so, so the, the site plan application that we granted is, is, is in essence closed now, right? Has been closed?
Yes.
So this is, so, and, and what they're doing, they have, they, they have, they have by right to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Cause there's no, there's no, um, amount of, of fill that you can bring in for agricultural purposes.
But is it, I mean, is it really agricultural?
Yeah. I mean, when they get done, Brent Pausen was putting his cows there.
Yeah, the plan was to bring this back to, uh, if I remember correctly, the, they, they had a plan of, of kind of bringing this back to, all back to farmland. You know, um, however, that was going to be done. So, um.
Okay. Well, if that's, I mean, if that's, that's the, if, if that's the intent and that's what we were being told, I, I, I think that's, that we're, we're not.
That's it.
I mean, honestly, I, I don't, and I don't know if Darryl remembers it all, the, when this, uh, application first came before us, I, I don't, I, I certainly don't remember that that we were saying okay to to a project that was going to be this long and that was going to leave a huge hillside on Kent Hollow Road, um, barren for, for ten years.
Well, it's not that long, but.
I think we're mostly concerned with the active and intensive trucking of material back and forth to Lake Warmog. And, you know, they did mention that they were going to return this to estate to have cattle in it. So.
Well, it has been eroding pretty consistently since I'd been living here.
Right.
It's, and very significant with some of the larger gully washers we've been having.
Yeah. I did go, I drove by after one of the larger, um, uh, storms that we had because I'm actually looking at the piece of property across the street now. Um, but, um, there was a huge gully that has since been filled in, um, uh, topsoiled and seeded, um, with the erosion that put on it. So that, that one has been corrected.
And the, and, and the topsoil, if I'm understanding, um, is coming from off-site, but still it's agricultural use and it's agriculture use.
Right. And they have a wetlands exemption too.
So what would you like us to do?
Um, nothing. I, I am bringing it forward to you because I'm leaving. So I just want you to know if somebody comes back with a complaint, I did talk to Mr. Minor, been actually having numerous conversations with Mr. Minor from across the street. Um, he no longer has an issue with, uh, Mr. McAfee or with Mr. Forresty. And, um, is very happy with how everything is looking right now. So I just wanted to, to get a baseline because we hadn't had one. Um, and so, um, I've been chatting with Vinny about what's going on there. And I've also been chatting with Vinny about what's going on across the street. So that might end up being, um, a notice with an injunction. So we'll have to see.
What's across the street?
Uh, somebody put in a driveway and they clear cutted a, quite a swath of, uh, of both sides. They're not in the horizon line, but, um, I talked to the guy twice on the, uh, once on the phone and I did send him a letter and said, and I, you know, you have to stop doing what you're doing right now. Um, and then I called the tree guys were there today and I did call them and told them you are stopping work right now until the property owner gets in touch with me. So we'll see what happens tomorrow.
Okay.
But take a ride through there and go down to the bottom and look up on the hill. But yeah, Alice is on, you're on mute, but I'm reading your looks and it's very, very noticeable.
It's hard to miss.
Yeah, yeah. So.
And, and having those, uh, tr- trucks go by with the dirt back and forth whenever that was, this is nothing. What, the trucks that are, they've been going back and forth recently are nothing.
Right.
They should be. In terms, in terms of numbers or noise or breaks or activity, it, it's minor. And I, I think some of those trucks, as somebody mentioned, have something to do with the construction going on on a new property ever in Kent Hollow. I don't think they all have to do with McAfee.
Right. That's what he said. He said, they're not mine. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but that's, that's that.
Okay. So, um, there's nothing for us to do there. Thank you, Donna. Um, six before, this is a preliminary discussion, uh, Virginia Bush, Sutman, April Off Road, map nineteen block fifteen for a conversion of a detached boathouse to an accessory dwelling. And I believe Virginia is here.
I am indeed. Uh, let me do a gallery so you can see me somewhere here. There I am. Um, I am so fascinated. Once a year I like to watch one of your, one of your meetings with all that big stuff. You're amazing. Uh, I've come with a tiny thing. I want to put somebody in my barn to live. I have this, I have this property that has, uh, a two-family house and a barn which was renovated recently. It was built originally in nineteen, in nineteen eighty-nine as a boathouse. And I renovated it in, well, finishing in twenty-one to an office, which I no longer need as an office. And since there are so many people who need homes, it's a nice studio apartment. I think you saw pictures of it. And it's, uh, nicely fitted out and I'd like to be able to rent it. The only problem is the regs do not permit that. There, there are a couple of problems. The regulations say you can have a detached dwelling unit uh, on a property with a single family house. Well, I happen to have a double, uh, two-family house because I already have an accessory apartment, uh, which I rent to somebody who needs a home. So what I'd like to do is provide another home for somebody else. And, uh, as I said in my letter, Donna has suggested that because the property itself oddly enough is in both the, uh, village center and the rural district that I changed the, changed the property line into two, two separate properties. Uh, drawing a line across that. I have asked Gary Hop to get a, a uh, survey for that, but, uh, Gary doesn't work that fast. But I would, would do that.
I, I have a question. If you, if you made it to lots, um, you would have a problem with your septic because you can't have a shared septic.
I am on the town sewer.
You're in the town sewer.
And town water.
Okay.
So that the, uh, the, if, if this property is divining, the one in the rural area would have, would share my septic and town water. Uh, it would be a quarter of an acre, uh, which is not uh, what is listed for the rural zone isn't, is a, an acre, but that's because of septic, but I don't need a septic. I've got one. I put it in to go to that, that barn. So that's one possibility. There's another possibility is that if you do not feel that the necessity for, uh, as written in the regs, is it an accessory, uh, accessory, separate dwelling unit can only be added to a property that has a single family house. I do not understand why that is a necessity since my particular house is smaller than most single family houses, my two families. Uh, so that would be, uh, one way of viewing it as a possibility. Another would be that, uh, it, uh, is regarded as a multifamily property. There are several multifamily properties, uh, in the, um, village center. Uh, residential. Uh, two on Elizabeth Street and, uh, some others around town. There would be again, something which would simply be waiving that restriction uh, that it has, that you can't do a multifamily in the in the, uh, village center. Uh, despite the fact that there are several that have been there for a long time and several, uh, that, uh, are probably grandfathered. And so what I'm asking for is a tiny little change of, of definition. Uh, nothing will change visibly except that I will add parking places. The building is already there. Nothing will change in the footprint. The services are all, already there. Nothing will change in that. All I want to do is offer somebody a studio, nice studio apartment to live in. You're probably aware that a number of apartments in town have recently been bought and are being upgraded. The one on thirteen Lane Street gossip tells me they're going to charge eighteen hundred for those apartments. That's not particularly affordable. Uh, the people who live there did not make that kind of money. The same is probably true of the eight units behind uh, behind eighty-one North Main, the, the Kent Victorian, which is being extensively renovated too. So I, all I'm asking is that somebody else can live here in this nice place. Exactly the way it is built now.
So I, I think we get it and probably everybody is fine with it, but I, I'd like to ask Donna, um, what, you know, what you think is the the best or cleanest way for Virginia to, um, to move forward on this? I, I read her letter and then the, the different, her different options, but I'm not sure what what you think is the best way for her to go.
I mean, I, I, I think, I think we need to get a site plan from Gary that shows the delineation of the village center residential and the rural break. Where is that? Because you need to figure out the structure that you're looking at. Where is it actually located in the village center residential or in the rural district? Um, and then I think we need to look at if it can't be, if it can't be split because it doesn't meet the minimum lot requirement. Can we waive that minimum lot requirement? Because like she says, the lot requirement is there because of the septic. So, um, if, you know, I don't know if we can, if legally we can do all of them. So if we can't do any of that, then it would be looking at a regulation change. And changing that, that one word that says single family, two family. Or taking that requirement out of there altogether.
So so there's really, in the end, there's really nothing at all we can do. And, and I don't even know that it's even worth having any discussion right now until we get the site plan from Gary, which will give you and give this commission some direction on what the best way would be for Virginia to, to be able to do this. I, I mean, I don't want to talk for everybody, but I, I don't think anybody has a problem with, with what she wants to do. And I, I think it's great that she wants to provide an apartment and, and housing for somebody that they can afford.
So on the other side of town, I'm sorry, Don, on the other side of town, um, where we've got both properties in both the, the, the village center commercial, the village center residential and the, and the rural district, we've got that fourteen forty line, right? Then the fourteen forty line is, is, is a real, is a real delineation because the steep slopes get, the slopes get steeper above that fourteen forty line.
Right.
On the other side, um, there doesn't seem to be that delineation between the, the rural zone and the, and the, the village center residential zone.
Um, it's, I think at one point in time, what it was, was the boundary of the river. That's the only thing that I can think of.
We wouldn't want somebody to be living in the floodplain, right? So what does a floodplain mean? Is it the hundred-year floodplain? And where does that go? Where's that line?
They don't. You know what? This, this building, so the, this is the boat, this is the boathouse, right, Virginia?
Virginia.
So this is the.
Yeah, can I tell you a few more things about that?
Virginia, Virginia, can you wait? Cause we're having a discussion.
Sure. I didn't realize.
This, the, this boathouse sits at the very top of the hill. Then, you know, it actually spans the hill. And I'm wondering if it isn't almost half in the rural zone and half in the, in the VR one. Because it goes, it goes down fairly steeply right behind it.
Um, yeah.
So it, so I'm sure that it's not in the floodplain. I'm sure the floodplain. And you know, when Virginia did the renovations and, um, I know the house, I know the property from before Virginia owned it. They, they didn't have to do anything with floodplain, um, construction or anything.
I do have, I do have the floodplain on some plan here, but I didn't put it in the package. But I will say to, to work against my own, my own pitch here. That lower part, this is bluff road. And where the house is, where my garage is, where this boathouse is, it's all on the level with bluff road. Then it drops maybe twenty feet. And then it's, well, it drops a lot. And then it's flat down there by the river and it floods there every winter. So if I were to divide that into a separate property with a single family house, provided that the property line allows for it, it would be a house in the middle of a flood. I don't really want to divide it that way.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that. I wouldn't suggest subdividing the property. I would suggest moving the line. Um, so Donna, let me ask you this.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Oh, interesting. Okay. Well, the only problem becomes. Oh, interesting. Okay. Well, the only problem becomes you've got bluff road in there.
Yeah, but I've, I'm looking through the regulations now with regard to the village of the, the permitted accessory buildings in the, in the village center residential districts. And, and, and this would be a lift, if all of this property were in the village center residential. What Virginia wants to do would be permitted, if I read it right. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So the simplest thing to me would be to, to figure out where, as, as, as Virginia and Donna said already, to figure out where that line is and if we need to move the line. Because if it's outside the, if it's outside the flood zone, then let's, let's, let's have it what, where it should be in the village center residential.
That's, I was going to suggest that exact thing. It's easy and straightforward.
But that's what, that's why I said at the beginning, I, I don't know, there's much of a discussion for us to have right now because we can't make a discussion. We can't really have a real discussion about this until Gary gives us a site plan that shows us.
That's right. Absolutely. And, and, and David and I were just trying to steal your ideas all.
So part of the property is in a one hundred year and what part of the property is in five?
Of the whole property. But not, not necessarily the building. I don't think, I don't think
The building.
Oh.
The, you know, the, the, the boathouse, the boathouse is a boathouse. You know, to hold the boats for the, for the South Kent school.
Yeah.
So.
And then it was Braden's and he would use it at one point.
Right. So that is.
If you, I, I haven't, the floodplain, the hundred year flood runs right through the line of the boathouse barn. The five hundred year flood is, is another ten feet, let's say, towards Elizabeth Street from that. So.
But the thing is that, that's getting it in plan view and the reality is that this building is above the floodplain.
If you look down at it, the elevation is right, Adam?
Yes, the elevation is higher than the floodplain. It's just, you know, the half of the building, you know, the building's that grade.
And you see this?
But the other side, you know, the other side is on, is on legs that, that have it fifteen feet off the ground.
Yeah, here's, here's the floodlines right there. That square there is the boathouse. There are the floodlines.
The, the building itself isn't really, you know, it's above the, it's above the
Okay. And, 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 I mean, it's not that you can't build in it. You would just, you know, and everything is, it's not that you's, everything on the inside is already above it.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I agree. I think that what we need to do is wait to see what Gary has pulled together. Let's see if we can't move that. So you're saying move the, the designation of the VR. Then you have to do a zone change. As opposed to a lot line change.
Yeah, which is considerable.
I, I, I don't know that it is considerable ju, because we're, because we're really talking about up the, an existing condition, right? We would run the risk of saying, well, everybody along that, that, that floodplain line could build and they, they, they could build up on stilts and be considered in the rural zone all the way down, you know, so we could extend, in essence, extend for your neighbors, extend the rural zone all the way out to the river as long as we built up on stilts. Which we probably don't.
On stilts, yes. Well, there's some houses on Johnson Road that are in that, that level part down by the river.
Right there, but they're in the rural zone and they're not looking to have
They're in the rural zone.
Alright, so let's, so Virginia, Virginia, let's do this. Let's wait to see what Gary comes back with.
Okay. In the meantime, I would invite any of you to come and look at the property itself. Because even with the pictures I put, I don't think you can quite understand the three dimensions. And I'm not sure that the three dimensions work to my advantage, but.
I think it would, I think it would let everybody see how the building is and how high it is above, of, above where.
And if, if you go.
So it certainly isn't a bad idea.
If you go down to the patio underneath, you will see the steel beams that hold it up, which are considerable. So, uh, but don't come right now because I've got COVID and I'm going to be in quarantine for a little longer. Or don't knock on my door, just go down there.
And don't go more than two people or more than one person. You can't go two together. Cause then it's a meeting.
Right. When, when was this, when was the building built originally? Does anybody know?
Mr. Braden built it, or he used that spot and constructed the, the boathouse.
It's cantilevered so he could drop the boats through the floor.
Yeah.
Which, and the floor has all been remade and re
I don't know.
Bill Braden loved that boathouse.
So is it sixty-seven? Is it fifty? Is it eighty?
No.
It was just a shed. I, I, I don't know. I mean, it really was just a shed.
But when? Does it predate? Does it?
Nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen eighty-nine. The house dates nineteen thirty-eight.
Yep.
The boathouse dates nineteen eighty-nine.
Alright.
It's on the survey there.
Yeah, it's not, it's not preexisting in the regulations.
So it's, if it doesn't be, if it doesn't predate the, 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 the separation of the, the, the zone, then that doesn't work. It would have been easy, you know. Okay.
Yeah.
Don is right.
I would just give it to somebody if I could, but I, if somebody lives there all winter, the electric is pretty expensive for the, for the mini split HVAC, so. I'd charge minimal for it. So I'm really just asking the ability to charge enough to make it not a loss for me.
Well, we really appreciate your efforts to, uh, to provide housing, uh, Virginia. I mean, you've been doing it for so long and, um,
Well, I've loved working with you to do that over the last fifteen years. And this is my last small gesture.
You said that the last time, Virginia.
And we'll see if we can work something out.
The, Virginia, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No better.
So it's late, so I'm going to try to push us forward. Somebody wants to go on vacation.
Yeah, um, I'm going to be gone from the thirty-first until August fifth. I'll be back, um, in the office on the eighth.
Okay, so after this, Donna, how many, how many vacation days do you have?
Well, this is actually this year's vacation, but I have, um, thirty-five days, so I'll have thirty days left.
Wow.
So you better, you better start taking them.
No, they're going to pay me out.
Okay.
Plus what, whatever I have carried over, because I can carry over five days a year, so.
Okay.
I might be going on an extended vacation.
Alright.
Um, and then, um, the, um, I'll be out of the office half a day on the twenty-first. I'll be doing the plan of conservation and subdivision meeting from Essex, Connecticut. From the Griswold Inn, if anybody's been there. Um, because I have a CASIO meeting the next day at nine o'clock in the morning. Um, in the, uh, at the Save Brook Point Resort. So, uh, we're going to go down and spend the night down there and then, so I'll be doing the meeting on the twenty-first from there.
The, uh, the supposed meeting on the twenty-first.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, seems like the twenty-first. I don't know, but that we can discuss that as we get to the P O C D subcommittee, so, um. Okay.
So then, uh, eight A, the P O C subcommittee, I don't, there's really nothing for us to, uh, is there anything first to discuss? Or we can discuss the, the, the results of, or, or the note from the meeting?
So I would, I would jump in and say, um, very quickly, that's the, so we, we, I think the meeting that we had, um, at, at the end of June went really well. Um, and it's Glenn has come up with, um, his comments and suggestions for the P O C D subcommittee. He's got those in a, in a format that he's going to send out. If he hasn't already, he's going to send out to the four of us, the five of us, right?
You'll get that tomorrow morning. I got it late tonight.
Okay, fine, fine. So, um, then the next steps are, um, that the P O C D subcommittee is going to have a meeting. Hopefully on the twenty-first, if that works for everybody. I'm hoping that works for everybody because that works for Glenn. That's a week from tonight.
The twenty-first?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um, we suggested, you know, like we said that either five thirty or six, so we can, Donna, do you want to decide that now?
Yeah, this way I can file the agenda.
Um, five thirty is hard for me.
Is it? Okay.
It, um,
yeah, I mean, we all have, we all have day jobs for sure.
Really?
Well, you would definitely have a day job now.
Not for long.
No, her day job seems to extend into the night an awful lot.
Um, so how about six o'clock?
The six o'clock is great, on the twenty, Thursday, the twenty-first.
Right, so that's one week from tonight, six o'clock. Karen and Mark, that works for you? Alright, awesome.
Alright, so look for the, um, the compilation of the comments from Glenn. I'll send that out tomorrow morning. And I'll file the agenda for the twenty-first. It will be via Zoom.
Great. And then we, as a sub, subcommittee, we'll, we'll talk about next steps and we'll, we'll bring that back to the full commission at our next meeting. So that's it for the P O C D. Thanks, everybody, for participating at the end, at the end of June. I thought that was a great meeting.
Hello, um, can, can anyone hear me?
Oh, yeah, if somebody wants to, tell me, it said.
Yeah, hi, um, hi.
Can you say your name, Charlotte?
I'm, I'm Charlotte Herdy. You all probably know my mom, Robin Dill. She owned the bookstore for, um, eight years or so. Um, I, all of you kind of look familiar. I probably know your kids. Probably went to Kent Center with them.
Look much older.
Yeah, I'm twenty now, so, um, I, this might sound ridiculous, but I was on this meeting for three hours just to say one simple thing. Um, I heard from my friends, um, that I dog sit for, that there was a complaint over roosters.
Now, you know, Charlotte, um, we're not on that right now.
Okay.
And, um, and that, that's the end of the meeting and when we get to that, we'll get to that.
Okay, is it at the end of the meeting now or?
No, no, we're, uh, that's nine C and, um, you can say, but I'm going to tell you, we're not going to receive any comments on it. Um, we're going to receive the letter, but it's really not something for the, for the, for the planning and zoning commission, but I'll address that when we get to nine C.
Okay.
Thank you. Um.
Thanks though for your engagement, Charlotte. That's, you know, it's, yes.
Yeah, you know, I've lived here for twenty years, um, always had a lot to say, but I didn't even know this thing existed. So I would have been on many more of these calls. I think I would have been the only person of my age on these calls, but I appreciate um, everything that you guys have done for, for Ken. Um, I, I, it's a great town.
Alright, Adam, you're up.
Eight B, the Affordable Housing Sub, Plan Subcommittee. I think that's you, David.
It is, yes. Uh, however, I'm going to ask Alice to pinch it because on Tuesday, I, um, I had a conflict and missed the meeting. Uh, I do, we did have our first draft of the meeting. Uh, our first, our first draft of the plan was completed based on all the feedback and work to date. Uh, so this is a working meeting to get, to go over it. And I have my own comments that I sent in and Alice, maybe you can report on how the meeting itself went.
Uh, David, unfortunately, I was not there either and I had noticed to Jocelyn a week ago that I would not be available. So I had no idea you were not, so I, I can offer no feedback.
Alright, I'm waiting for the minutes from Jocelyn. Uh, she hasn't released them yet, but I will, uh, mail either for them or have a better update in the next meeting. We're so used to not emailing each other directly. We only email Jocelyn and then we don't know what everybody else has said to each other now.
Thank you. So, um, on to, uh, other communications and correspondence, nine A. Administrative permits and certificates of compliance, um. Does anybody have any questions? Donna, do you have any comments about it?
Um, um, I, I don't know whether or not you even looked at it, but, um, but I did issue a temporary certificate of zoning compliance for high rock.
I did see that, but then there was a comment under it and I didn't totally understand.
Right, so basically, um, all I, all I did was give them a temporary zoning compliance for the construction of the building. Um, and that's basically all I did. Um, um, and I did that so that the plan, so that the building official and the fire marshal could issue a temporary CO so that they could do a ribbon cutting and have thanks coming and look at it. Um, so they are going to be pushing for a full certificate of zoning compliance and a zoning permit. I did meet with Derek Transillo for about a half an hour the other day. We went over the things that he still owes us and what we need. Um, I explained the process to him, how it's going to work. Um, he's got a couple of things that he needs to take care of. They still have not obtained their state license to operate. Um, and, um, they're waiting for a final sign off from the fire marshal and the building official before they do that. I talked to Alan, um, uh, Goll today. Um, he came in and we went over, um, he's going to go up and he's going to look at, um, the parking spaces, the turning radiuses, um, he's going to look at the, um, the special curving or, or, um, the, those, um, the cement blocks, I can't remember what they're called, the cavers, um, that were, that were put in, um, to hold the, um, the fire trucks. He's going to, he'll be checking all of that out and he's going to be supplying me with a final letter. So, you know, it, it could be, this is the end of July, it could be as soon as the middle of August. Um, there, they, um, Mike Doherty did call me and told me that they were having a problem with the landscaping. They wanted me to modify the landscaping and I refused to do that. I said, if you want a modification to the landscaping, you're going to have to go to the commission. Because that was the only reason why you got your permit to actually do what you're doing. And I'm not going to modify that. It was a huge thing. The landscaping was a huge thing. So I told Derek that, um, before I would give them a regular, uh, certificate of zoning compliance and their zoning permit, I need a site plan for the landscaping, um, to show that they actually installed what they had promised the commission they were going to install. In order to provide the proper screening, um, that was agreed upon at the special permit hearing. So, um, you know, we're still probably a month away, um, at this point. So, just, you know, you know, you know, I was waiting for someone to call and say, you did what, but.
And now it's, it's certainly not unusual for a project of that size to, to get a, a, a temporary CO, right? A TCO first, so they can start to move, move in their, uh, this is all the life safety stuff is done. They can start to put their, their furniture in and get, get the systems up and running and do the training. And so, yeah, that's, it seems perfectly reasonable.
Yep. But that's all I have on that.
Okay, so, um, monthly financials, which we don't really have any, so we can bypass that. And, um, nine C, um, you know, we can acknowledge that, that a letter was sent to us. Um, it does not, this issue does not fall underneath, under the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's a right to farm ordinance, which is not under the Planning and Zoning Commission, so, um, and we don't, uh, we don't govern noise, so, um.
So Adam, are we suggesting anything, or Donna, are we suggesting that this, this letter go to somebody else? Or are we acknowledging the letter and then, and deciding not to act on it because it's not in our purview? What's, what's the?
He, he's already, oh, go ahead, Donna.
I've accepted it as, just as written communication, um, because they're not asking for any action. We don't, we don't have any action. We don't regulate, roosters are allowed in the rural district. Um, and, and, and as Adam said, we do have a right to farm ordinance, which protects any farms from nuisance, um, lawsuits. If they feel that they want to change the regulations, they would need to follow the process of doing that. Um, and I, and I have a form here in the office that they can fill out. And they can come in with a proposed change to the regulation. and they can come in with a proposed change to the regulation if they want to, and then go through the public hearing process, but that's basically, um, they weren't asking for anything, just
It's not a regulation, it's an ordinance.
It's not a regulation.
And in the, in the, in the, in the, um, meeting folder, Donna added the ordinance, it's a town ordinance, which is, which is governed by the selectman's office. So this really isn't an issue for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And that ordinance says specifically that if, if you have a complaint about, uh, a nuisance, take it to the first selectman. That's what they should be doing.
So that's sort of where I was going. I'm sorry, it's, um, Alice, I know you wanted to say something to Donna too, but that's, that's sort of what I was, what, where I was going, Mark, and trying to find a way to, to, to maybe, um, recommend to the, the writer of the letter where they should go from here.
They have done that, I believe.
They need to read the right to farm ordinance. The right to farm ordinance protects the farmers from nuisance, right, uh, nuisance laws. The regulations do state in the rural district that roosters are allowed. They are not allowed in the VR one or the VR two districts, but they are allowed in the rural district. So, and, and what they need to do is follow the direction, um, of the right to farm.
Okay, that's great. Thanks. I just, I just wanted to, wanted to clarify. I understand that we're, we're not taking public comment and this is just, uh, but I, I just wanted to be, to put something in words on record in the recording, what we thought. Okay.
Hello, uh, this is Doug Nguyen. Uh, may I say one quick something, please?
What we thought we were, we
We're not, Doug, Victor, we're not, um, or Doug, we're not
I'm, I'm, I'm a co-owner of the property with Victor Lewis. But I, 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 I understand, uh, there's something that's come up and I, I do want to, uh, to mention it, please, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, so Donna, thank you, uh, for the discussion of the right to farm ordinance. We have read it, we, you know, and we appreciate that. This is kind of the first time we've heard exactly what next steps could be taken, which is great. The one thing, and I won't get into the details of the, 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 the noise factor, but, um, uh, because our, all of our contact information was shared, uh, on your website for the agenda today, and then, uh, also, uh, uh, Ms. Speedler, Mr. Libero and Ms. Karen Echol, um, all neighbors of ours, uh, have had a Facebook, social media frenzy and we have been vilified. So given that our contact information has been shared on your website, we're getting very disturbing calls, uh, and, uh, full of vitriol. Uh, we've had garbage thrown on our property in just twenty-four hours. And so, please, uh, we, we just ask, uh, for mutual respect. Uh, we, we, we're good people and we, we just, we're not attacking anyone. We're just not sure what to do about the excessive noise. But we seriously didn't want garbage and, and, uh, uh, very disturbing phone calls to be made to us. So we're, we're a little frightened at this point.
I'm sorry that's happening. I, I, there's, we have no, um, control, we, uh, you know, anybody who sends, sends correspondence into us, I mean, it's the law, we have to, or that, that, all that information has to be posted. We don't have the ability to not.
Okay, I just wanted all of you, all of you to be aware that there has been a, a lot of negative things happening to us in the past twenty-four hours because of all of this and this discussion and social media. So, um, but anyway, thank you. That's all I have to say on this right now.
Thank you. I, 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 that's shameful. So I, 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 I echo Adam's dismay at that behavior and, uh, yeah, absolutely shameful.
Okay, and I, and I'm sorry for interrupting, but sincerely thank you for, for, for this small moment.
Di, are we gonna go into executive session?
Yes, I have a lot of things to report.
Okay, so, um, can I get a motion to move to executive session, please?
I'll move that we enter executive session regarding the open, uh, legal action against us.
Ten, eleven and twelve, right, David?
Yep, all three at once.
I'll second the motion, Donna.
Thanks, Karen.
All in favor?
So we're gonna go into um, I'm going to put, um, everybody into the waiting room.
And I'm just gonna say that we're gonna move into executive session, executive session at nine fifty-seven.
Hey, everybody's in the waiting room. I'm going to pause. So we're back at an executive session at ten twenty-three.
So, um, can somebody make a motion for all three, um, topics that we plan, that we, um, will follow our attorney's recommendations?
It's not three because we don't have three lawsuits.
It's just for the two.
Right?
So I, I would move that, uh, I, I would move that, uh, that we make the same recommendations we make every time we come out of executive session, um, that we follow the, the, uh,
Yeah, Mr. Winter moved to follow the recommendations of the attorney and have Donna his report back to the commission on that as the matter progresses.
I will second.
I'll memorize that for next time, Donna. All in favor?
Copy and paste.
Motion carries. And, um, a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned at ten twenty-five.
Wow.
All right, not bad, Adam, not bad at all.
Too long.
This was
I thought this was gonna be a short meeting tonight.
I thought so too, so did Wes. He was, we all thought it was